I don't need no more.
At this time, I'd like to call to order the Human Services Committee, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could have the clerk take the role, please.
Commissioner Angie.
Present.
Commissioner Torrello.
Present.
Commissioner Samasco.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Vandenbosch.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present.
Item two, there is an addition to our Agenda Resolution 2516. Can I have a motion to add that to the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you, we'll add that to Agenda seven F. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I don't have any citizens wishing to be heard this evening. Moving forward, any updates from commissioners? Hearing none. Conceptual initiatives? There is one item, the Comprehensive Treatment Centers for St. Clair County.
So Tom and I are going to take this together. The opioid advisory committee has been working on this for some time. One of the gaps identified in the community is the lack of treatment options for those suffering from opioid addiction. So the committee has been working towards exploring what we needed to do to bring some treatment options to the community. So Tom will go through what the committee has done and what we are recommending and then to see what the commis- how the commissioners feel about that and give us some direction on how to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Hepting. Commissioners, we'll see on your desks, there is a packet for Comprehensive Treatment Centers. So our opioid advisory committee had met several times to kind of look at what, you know, what do we do to address this gap within medication-assisted treatment within our community. And what we found out is that there is no medication-assisted treatment in our community. There are individuals struggling with opioid substance use within our community who do not have methods of treatment. So part of that opioid advisory committee was looking at how do we address this here in St. Clair County? And what was concluded from the opioid advisory committee and its in-county treatment subcommittee was looking at an RFP for treatment providers to come into St. Clair County with the utilization of opioid settlement funds. Through a interview process and a scoring criteria, the subcommittee had came down and recommended comprehensive treatment centers as that selection. That was presented to the opioid advisory committee, which includes several of our judges, many professionals in the field that are working with these individuals. So we are here today, obviously, to kind of go over a little bit, just to kind of see if this is something that the Board of Commissioners wants to allocate funding from the opioid settlement funds. And that's something that, obviously, this is a fluid process. Comprehensive Treatment Centers has not submitted a formal proposal, so we'd like to kind of inquire to see if this is something that we want to do. And that Miss Hepting and I can go back to Comprehensive Treatment Centers and kind of work through some of that proposal process. So you will see within that packet, obviously, it identifies that the opioid overdose deaths are still significant, especially as it pertains to fentanyl. Still seeing a lot. I did reach out to Karen Bellinger from Tri-Ho- Trihospital EMS, and there's 416 overdose-related calls in 2024. So that was a pretty significant eye-opener for me, as it still pertains, that we're still struggling with substance use in our community. Some of the packet information, obviously, fentanyl is the leading cause of death for Americans, 18 to 44. So there's still a significant need for this, and we know that there is a significant gap of treatment within our community. The other big thing is, obviously, medication-assisted treatment programs, or OTPs, opioid treatment programs, is one of the core objectives of the opioid settlement fund. So it's definitely one of those things that are selected within kind of the state of Michigan to identify things that opioid settlement funds are intended to be used for. They do have partnerships with Livingston County, Kent County, Ottawa County. They have mobile clinics that help address opioid substance use. So for some of the more rural communities, you know, they have talked about, you know, expanding to kind of like a mobile clinic to address, you know, transportation issues and different things that many of our residents in St. Clair County struggle with. Questions? That was a recap.
So, you know, in the old days, olden days, I guess, we had the convention for the Intervention Center, and then one wing on the southwest corner was juvenile. And then we had the Day Treatment Night Watch Center. Both of those are now gone, right?
In the Intervention Center?
Right, we don't, we don't, we don't have, we don't operate a juvenile detention center in the Intervention Center anymore, do we, or do we?
So our day treatment program is entirely in the Intervention Center? So the building on the corner of Mokene, Michigan is something that we've looked at for animal control?
Wasn't there a time, we just talked before the meeting a little bit, you know, several years ago, I remember, see, at the courthouse, we talked about, it was with the magistrate, about how the county provides lodging for juvenile delinquents that need to be lodged, and it was all sent out county, right? So this, this treatment facility, Treatment Center idea, where would that take place? And I didn't get a chance to look at what you handed out.
So this has nothing to do with juveniles, this is actually all adults?
Oh, it's all just for adults, okay.
Yep, and it's outpatient opioid treatment programs.
Oh, I see, okay.
So it's for adults that are struggling with opioid substance use. It's for treatment for that specifically.
I misunderstood, thank you.
Tom, I saw that in 2019, there was a pilot program that was launched, actually took place at the Intervention Center regarding this exact kind of thing, is that right?
Yeah, so the jail currently runs a medically, medication-assisted treatment program. It's a partnership through their current provider and Sacred Heart. But what you're seeing is there is a gap within services, so once they come into the jail, there may be a timeframe where they're struggling with the withdrawal symptoms within the jail, leading to behaviors and different things. So this will actually assist with that warm handoff from when they're receiving treatment within the jail, back into the community within existing provider. So as some of these individuals who are struggling, it won't allow for a gap in services, it'll actually allow things to transition pretty smoothly.
And those kinds of services are not available at places like Odyssey, or Huron House, or BW Rock?
Correct, so medication-assisted treatment is a medical process, so it takes a little bit more, obviously, your community-based services like BW Rock, Odyssey House, they help address things, and it kind of got a community platform with different treatment modalities, some peer recovery coaches, some different things, and I can't speak to the expansiveness of kind of what they offer, I don't want to undersell them at any means, but this is a little bit different than kind of what they offer within their services.
Sure, so you mentioned it would be an outpatient situation?
Correct.
Would there be a building that is purchased and out of which medical doctors operate?
Correct, yep, so they're actually looking at if we were to move forward with the proposal, they understand the significance of finding an appropriate location. You know, we know that something like this isn't going to be a good fit around schools and residential areas. These are all things that CTC has expressed very early on, and this is something that, you know, Ms. Hepting and I have also expressed, that we have to find the right location here in St. Clair County for this to be most successful.
I'll tell you, in my profession, I'm all for treatment for these kinds of individuals who find themselves addicted to these awful substances. One of the things that concerns me, however, about medication treatment for those kinds of things, is I have seen countless times over the past 30 years that people get off of one substance only to become addicted to another. For instance, Vivitrol, my abuse and neglect work up in Santa Lat County, I was constantly inquiring, when, when is this person going to be weaned off of the Vivitrol, and there was never any answer to that. So I'm wondering, is there going to be some kind of a structure, oversight, a weaning period? Is it, is it designed to help them step off of substances completely?
Yeah, I would say that that's probably within kind of the treatment modalities for CRC or CTC. I think the big thing is, as we take these step in, if this is something that the board would like to do, within that proposal, I think it'd be important for some of the spokesperson's for CTC Treatment Centers to be present within the meeting to answer some of those more in-depth questions.
You mentioned that a committee had, had already convened, and that committee consists of some of our judges here in town?
Sure.
And that, how long has that committee been ongoing? Sorry, I'm catching up.
Yep, so the opioid settlement funds, I think, were starting to be allocated in 2019, so was this post code, this is before my time too, so I'm kind of looking for Carrie to provide some answers.
So the county joined on to the lawsuit, the opioid settlement is a litigant in 2018, and the committee was formed, boy, I believe, maybe around 2020, 21. We started meeting in anticipation of starting to receive the funds, and now, in the past two, three years, we've had a regular meeting schedule, scheduled meetings, quarterly meetings for the larger group, and then we've broken off into subcommittees to talk about items, the Treatment Subcommittee, and then we have a wraparound Services Subcommittee as well.
So the committee's been exploring this for some time now?
Correct.
And you've come to the point where you'd like to start talking about it with the board and recommending it?
Yes, and we want to make sure that the board is interested in this concept before we continue to move forward with serious discussions with the vendor.
Thank you, thanks, Tom.
And the opioid settlement committee, that was part of this, was it 6.9 million that came, and then some of it's been dispersed, and then there's still balances, you're dealing, this is part of what to do with the rest of it?
That's correct, we actually currently are slated to receive about $13.5 million in opioid settlement funds between all of the different distributors over the next 17 years.
Chairman, how does that come in? Is that going to come in across the board evenly, or kind of in chunks? What do you, how do you see that?
With each different drug provider, it comes in differently. Some of them are coming in over 17 years, some of them, it's a one-time, one-sum payment. Some are coming in over five years. Each different drug company settlement is different.
So this conceptual initiative, what you would present would be funded through these funds, not a general fund allocation?
That's correct, and the, the concept would be to help bring a treatment provider into the community to assist with startup costs, but it would not be to fund them forever. It would be to assist with startup costs, help them get established, but the, the committee was not in favor of providing them annual alloc- ongoing allocations forever, it was just to assist with the startup.
So I'm, perhaps you'll see other things like this in the next 17 years coming forward from some of the funds, the best way to spend it, is that kind of right?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dave.
Got a half dozen questions. So you're saying we don't have any treatment options currently in St. Clair County?
Correct, there's no providers for medication-assisted treatment.
On your initial thing here, there's 2,931 deaths in the state of Michigan, if this is correct, 2023 data. How many deaths were in St. Clair County?
I would have to look for that data, I don't have that specific data.
Well, if it's a concern, and I, you know, definitely want to address the concern.
Absolutely.
If it ends up being zero, is it really a concern?
I can-
We've had more than zero.
I can tell you it's not zero. I also sit on the overdose fatality review board for the environment.
You said 416, and that would be your EMS, Emergencies Medical Service?
Correct.
Okay. Do we transport to any existing facilities? You made an example of Livingston County as one, do we currently transport any?
We don't transportation, or transport there. The only thing that we would transport to is the, you see Odyssey House, you see some of the local recovery networks, they'll transport to Sacred Heart, they'll transport to some of the more, and honestly, I mean, when we did the RFP, we were looking for a residential provider to come in to address that need, right? We know that that's a significant need throughout that RFP, we didn't have any vendors that-
In your group, what is the years, the scope of the years, are we going to do this for one year, two years, five years? Because you're going to be getting monies over 17 years.
Sure.
Hopefully, we're not putting another government entity buying a building and funding it. Of course, you mentioned that we're not going, that isn't our intent, but do we have a current intent for like a business plan of where we're going to go with this? Is it two-year funding to assist to get it set up?
Yeah, CTC's initial proposal included a three-year startup cost.
Okay.
So it's just for three years, you know, and that was the startup cost, the capital costs, and then three years for operating.
You know what the capital cost estimated?
Yeah, so I gotta tell you, the initial proposal, and again, I think this is pretty flexible, it was a $3.6 million proposal.
Is that going to be the total, or are we going to keep funding it with the monies that come in over 17 years?
So that was the, the entire proposal. Yep, so that included the building, the startup cost, the capital costs, and then three years operating.
So that would leave us with $9.9 million to do with other decisions that-
Correct.
If this goes forward, are they going to be under their own authority to make decisions? Are they going to be reporting to the St. Clair County Health Department, or to county administrator?
So they would be under their own, so CTC Centers, the Comprehensive Treatment Centers will be handling their own business. Obviously, we would have to look at reimbursement rates, so we're not going to, the intent would not be to just give them a $3.6 million check.
Exactly, that's where I'm getting at.
Correct, yep, you know-
We need to have some oversight on it, if we're going to be handing this kind of money out, to see if we're even getting a result on the intended purpose of what we want to do.
Absolutely, and that was something that when Ms. Hepting and I met with them, so Dan Pearson and Camila Weizenbaum were the two individuals we met with, which I think is their regional director and, you know, somebody up in their administrative team. We made it pretty clear that it's going to be on a reimbursement basis, not just a $3.6 million.
My last question, how fast do you want to move with this? Six months, three months, tomorrow?
So, and obviously, we have a lot to talk about in regards to a complete proposal. You know, they, they provided their initial proposal within the RFP, I think there's still a lot of discussion points that we need to make.
Three to six months, reasonable?
I would say that if, if the board wants to go through with this as a conceptual initiative, I think the next step is finalizing that proposal, getting that to the board, and then starting that process from there. So I would say we could have something back probably within the next three months.
Does this, and Lisa, would this need to be forwarded to the full board, because it's conceptual, you need a motion to have it forward to the full board?
Yes.
I support it, and I'll make that motion to forward this proposal to the full board.
Support.
Thank you, so we have our motion support, is there any more discussion?
The question, so this is a movement to full board, a proposal to allow them to work on a conceptual initiative?
To advance it to the next step, where they can come to us with an actual proposal, where we can look at, is this feasible in St. Clair County?
You can't just direct administration to do that, we need a motion.
So if, if the board, the majority of the board is in favor of us continuing with the process, then we don't need a formal motion, we can continue to work with the vendor, and then we will bring forward to a formal proposal that will require action.
Could we do it that way tonight, Lisa, just have a show express, you know, favor or disfavor amongst us, and there's a majority, just send it and have it done.
I mean, that's, that's the same as a vote, right? Favor or disfavor, so.
We didn't want to get too far down the road if the board wasn't in favor.
We do it now, we're having to send it to the full board in two weeks, it's like done, just go do it.
Okay.
How does that work? Do I have to remove my motion, or does he have to remove the second?
If you leave it the way it is.
I think it's hot, let's get it removed.
Sorry, I-
So, while we're still discussing, thank you, and the committee, for bringing this forward. This is a gap in our continuum of care in the county. I think we've all been affected by, or touched by the 400-plus overdoses that our EMS have been called to, so I think this is a great service, and at least we're taking a look at it, who knows where it'll go, but thank you for bringing this forward, and thank you to the committee for at least bringing it forward. So, any other discussion? We'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any old business this evening? Hearing none. Moving on to new business, the Ageways nonprofit senior services, formerly the AAA1D appointment?
Motion sent to the full board.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item C, the Yale Public Schools Subrecipalian Agreement Amendment for final action this evening?
Make motion, send, or for final action?
Wait, wait.
Library.
Oh, sorry, I got really excited about, I guess, Yale Public Schools tonight. Thank you. Item B, the agreement for the library assessment, Library Strategies Consulting Group.
Make motion, send it to the full board.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion on that one?
I have lots.
Okay.
Is this to form an authority?
We have Allison here tonight, if she wants to come up and talk to us about that.
Good evening, and thank you. Mr. Rushing, yes, this is, it's a good question, and it's been asked, no, the library board is not pursuing a separation or creation of an authority for the library at this time. This project is part of the plan for the strategic plan that was developed for the library system. It was identified that we need to be really looking at our current structure, our staffing levels, and to make certain that we are allowing for the staffing numbers to provide the services that we are continuing to grow due to the auspices of our support from the community. So this project is specifically about looking at our organizational structure, what is the appropriate way for the library to continue to be administered with, in terms of best practice for library systems of our size in the state of Michigan, and then across the country, and then also to look at our staffing numbers, to make certain that we have appropriately assigned tasks and not overburdening in one area and underutilizing in another area.
There's an awful lot in that, and authority's brought up many times, so that's why I have a concern, that specific word.
Right, well, as, and as you know, this, this has been a discussion and has been talked about for many, many years, even before my time with the library system. The reality is, is that there is still some discussion about this possibility, but not now. It's something that, should somebody after me, or after this current board-
Or me.
-be interested in pursuing, we want to be situated so that the library can be successful in doing so.
Do you believe your library's successful right now?
I do.
So you're advocating spending $34,200 on a consultant, and I'm not sure what the goals are, that you already have the professionals that you already have on your staff that can answer these questions?
Well, as the library is currently structured, the vast majority of our staff are labor, they're part of the union. We have five individuals who oversee and supervise the 11 locations across the county, and we supervise 125 and more individuals across the county, so five staff members. So in looking at our administrative staff, we recognize that there is some overburdening there, and, and so we want to make certain that we are making the right decisions when we are making changes to our staffing. Do we need to add administration to assist, do we need to add-
I think you're very capable.
I appreciate that.
I do, I, you and I have talked, and I believe you do a fantastic job, I think our library is fantastic. I'm concerned about spending money and expanding potentially supervision, so you've got five employees now, potentially it'll be 10 in the future, and of course, that's going to be on the millage, and people look at the tax dollars, and I look at that stuff pretty close, the tax dollars that are going to be potentially being spent, this is going to come forward before any action is taken, I believe. This goes forward, the consultant will give you recommendations, and then before any action's taken, it'll be coming to this board before the library does anything. Or are you going to enter into a contract before any further actions are taken or money's not?
The result of this study, and it is the hope of the library board and library administration, that the result of this study will give us recommendations that we can then act upon, whether those recommendations are to act upon all at once, or we phase them in as we see the growth of library program and the professional needs to support that growth.
So are any financial decisions going to be made, once you get the recommendation, potentially, the recommendations from this consultant? You're saying that the library potentially will make these decisions without any oversight from the elected officials?
Oh, no, because the library board is appointed by the commissioners, and the process of getting these changes made, it will go through the budgetary process, so we will put our budget together with the recommendation for staffing changes based on the study and the results of, and the recommendations of the consultant. The library board looks at that budget, they discuss it with library administration to make certain that it is, it is feasible and economic, and then that budget is then turned over to the commissioners and to Ms. Hepting for their, for your approval.
Of course, this potentially is going to be voted to go to the board, it's already been voted in a second. If I have any other questions I can ask you between now and-
Absolutely, I'm always at your service. Yep, okay.
Are there any other questions for Allison, Steve?
Allison, you know, I looked at the attachment, one scope of services for the consultant, you know, I would generally support reviewing operations as suggested by the department head, similar, perhaps, like the peer reviews, the landfill we're doing, we're going to look at a bunch of stuff, but a couple of things I didn't like in it, I would not support, number five, pathway independence. You know, when you make an authority, you do remove local accountability in a sense, I mean, some commissioners may think it's a good idea to just offload governance of that to an authority, point of board, and be done with it. I, I just, I don't like that, generally speaking, so, you know, is it possible that you could remove bullets, or number five and number six, which is pathway independence, and then recommendations for the organization to transition? I don't know that the board, maybe we should start with that, you know, is the board thinking we want to transition, I don't want to pay for a consultant to do that, because quite frankly, maybe we need to talk about it, but I'm not interested in doing that, you know, so that was kind of a hidden thing, and, not hidden, but I, everything else was fine, let's look at the staffing, how do you deliver services, that's all great, $34,000, you guys got a nice budget, it's millage-funded, it's 75% supported or more, you know, so that's all great. I just think that the board needs to exercise our, our duty for oversight and governance on all functions, including the library, you know, so that's just a philosophical thing, I may be alone on that, I don't know, but, so I would not vote for this to move it forward with that in there, that's my-
Certainly, so I am absolutely able to discuss with the contractor, or the vendor, Library Strategies, to have- to have those aspects removed from the contract.
How do you feel about that? Do you think that'd be okay to do that and maybe have a conversation another time about this transition independence?
I am more than happy to hold on that particular language. The library board, as I said, is not at a point where they are actively looking at any type of change. I think what they, what we are looking for, the library board and library administration, is really, what do the next 10 years look like? And, as things change so quickly lately, even in the library world, which is kind of a funny thing to think that the library world changes quickly, we want to be prepared for eventualities. And I, and I think the purpose of that language was to say that we are one of the last county libraries established in the state of Michigan. We were the first county library established in the state of Michigan in 1917. There are only about six left. So, it's, it's a dying establishment type. So, I wanted to make certain that whomever in the next 10 years, whether it's me or a different board or a different director, has the tools available to them to transition and pivot if necessary.
You're saying like our library system is governed by a local board of commissioners, there's not many of those left. You're saying most of the library systems in the state are actually authorities? Is that what you're?
That is correct. They're district libraries. They're established as district libraries.
Steve, I guess my question to you would be, if we're going to fork out $34,000 or whatever it is, why not get? What would it look like? We don't have to act on it. Maybe it's not even feasible, but at least we would have that information and we would know what it, it looks like and we're paying for it upfront versus kicking it down the road when we've already, it's already included in the proposal. At least we would know what it would look like. And, like Allison said, it's not something they're considering now. Even if it was, it would still have to come before us.
I suppose, I wouldn't have a, I mean, that would be fine if there was a majority felt they wanted to look at it at this point. I don't really want to consider that, but that's just me. You know what I'm saying? But, if, if five people on the board said, you know, we should look at it, look at it. I just, I didn't like that part of it. Everything else I really like. You're doing a great job. Citizens support the library. There's, I know, Yale, we have a wonderful system. K-PAC's a wonderful system. You know, the staff's great, you know, everything's going great. Village is well-funded, all that. I just don't want to give the public the impression that we're going to, you know, move towards, oh, they're going to create an authority and it's going to be, you know, run by some individual.
I understand that point of view.
That's all. Thank you.
I kind of see this showing forethought to look toward the future. I agree with you, Commissioner Bead. While you're doing this study, doesn't mean we have to do this, but while you're doing this study, you're showing forethought and looking toward the future and that possibility, as other libraries have done. So, I, I think that the board still retains ultimate control over whether that happens or not. But, I think to exclude it from the study would deny us some information that may be important.
Mr. Rushing?
I pretty much forwarded information. I asked Gary Fletcher because part of my concern about setting up an authority. When Troy Felman was here in 97, they came up with a resolution and revised it in 1999, Dash 34 Resolution regards to our St. Clair County Mental Health Board, and they have become an authority. Currently, they have 500 employees, see 8,000 individuals. I did forward information in regards to the vehicles. They currently have 73 vehicles that are licensed. They have more vehicles sitting in their parking lot that are just sitting there. For 500 employees, I have questions. We have no oversight over that because they are an authority, other than the authority board that we appoint. So, I have concerns the way that it's being run over there right now and not being able to get financial answers from them. So, that's why I'm really concerned about an authority potentially at the library.
Go ahead.
So, Allison, I could be totally off base on this, but libraries that are independent and operate independently with a board, those are district libraries, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so it's not really an authority which is set up by this board. And to become a district library, it requires a vote of the people, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, ultimately, whether they ever go there, it would have to be put on the ballot and the citizens would have to approve it. And so, it wouldn't be your call or their call, it would be the citizens.
Yeah, that wasn't clear from the scope of work.
Yeah.
I didn't understand the meaning.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor. If we could take a vote, do we want to do roll call or just regular?
Voice votes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, moving on to item 7C, the Yale Public Schools Subrecipient Agreement Amendment for Final Action.
Make motion.
Move that for final action.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
You need a roll call on that? Just asking.
Is that a money, is there a monetary figure on that?
Only if it has a monetary figure.
We'll do a roll call, yeah. Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Felix?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Bandenbosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bead?
Excuse me. Item D, the St. Clair County Library System Office Lease, 302 Michigan Avenue.
Make motion, send it to full board.
Second. Any discussion?
I guess Allison again, why do we need this?
So, as many of you have been aware of the library's need for additional space. We have been, in the past, in my 25 years with the library system, we've done multiple studies on the use of the main library building and the fact that we are running out of space. A few years ago, the library board made a commitment to this location at the main library. What we're finding is that the administrative aspect for the whole library system, for the county library system, is starting to, the staffing and the space needed to support the whole library system is starting to impinge on the public space available for the, for the main library building. Our children's library has not necessarily grown in foot, in square footage, but we are seeing, we have three storytimes a week in the main, in the main library, children's library, easily 60 children each time. And that's just growing. So, we're impinging on their availability for, for use of that space. As well as, we're looking at the possible use of the library's basement for public service. Some maker spaces being developed down there. We've got the Michigan Room Historical Documents, we're seeing more use there. That means that public are down in the basement. Our elevator, again, has not changed. It is, is not publicly accessible. We have to accompany patrons up to the second floor and down into the basement. We also had an inspection by the fire marshal. And adding more staff and more patron use of the basement requires additional work to the building. So, what we've, what we've suggested here is that as part, again, as part of the strategic plan, as mentioned in the strategic plan, that the administrative and system-wide support, staff and program be moved offsite so that we can open up the main library building for more public space use. Since we are not expanding the main library building or looking for a public library building for more space, this is the most economical way of opening up more public space use.
Couple more questions.
Yes, sir.
How much space does the administrative currently use at the existing building?
We are currently using about 6,000 square feet.
Because this is a pretty substantial bill. And it's taxpayer dollars. Whether you got, got the money to spend or not, it's still taxpayer dollars to get the administration to, into a different building. Now, you're not going to be onsite. And, I have two grandkids. I graduated two weeks ago from Memphis High School, which is fantastic. But, school sizes are getting smaller and smaller. The graduating class was around 70 there. When I graduated from K-PAC, and that's a small school, it was around 100. But, school sizes are getting smaller and smaller. We have less and less kids. The population's growing older. And we're slightly declining in St. Clair County. But, for the access to the libraries, is the people that actually come to the libraries increasing or decreasing?
The foot traffic is, is increasing. We are seeing growth back into the numbers that we were experiencing before COVID affected us.
If you would, would you please get that information for me?
I would.
Because we're going to be addressing this at the full board, so.
Absolutely.
I'll have that question answered.
Be happy to do that.
I've got a couple of questions, Allison.
Yes, sir.
The space that you're looking at is actually the second floor of the museum?
Correct.
And that's within walking distance of the library?
It is across the street, yes.
And it's quite convenient?
Yes. So, we have looked at other locations. This particular location will not cost us any mileage for staff who may need to work also in the main library with particular collections that are housed there. It also had previously been a county department, and so, it is already wired with fiber. So, that is a cost that we will not have to take on. And then, also, the, there is furniture that is already in, on the second floor that the department had not used. What was it? The Egan, I can't remember. It wasn't the prosecutor, it wasn't the public.
Public defender.
It wasn't the public defender. It was before that. They left that furniture there. And so, the need to purchase furniture to house these individuals from the staff from the library will not necessarily be an expense on the library as well.
That sounds quite efficient. You've also investigated the average cost per square foot in other locations and found this to be appropriately within that area?
Yes, actually, the cost per square foot offered in this particular lease is actually a dollar less than what we had been seeing in other investigations.
Thank you.
Question. So, essentially, Allison, by doing this, you would avoid the need for, say, a new building?
Correct.
Rather than replace the building, you're just going to get some additional space. It's like eight grand a month, is that something like that?
Yes, 8,500 a month.
And then, the leases with the Community Renaissance Fund, I was thinking maybe it was the City Port Huron, but that Community Renaissance Fund, that's the, what is it? What is that, a community foundation?
That is Community Foundation.
It's like, I don't know if that was the actual museum or that's actually the Community Foundation?
It is my understanding that the Knowlton family left the building and the museum
Okay, I get it.
implements to the Community Foundation and they have repurposed that facility.
So, this, this lease agreement would annuler to the benefit of a charitable organization within the county that owns that building?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
How many people, staff members, do you have on a daily basis over at the current library?
So, for the system-wide support activities, we have about 37 to 40 people. And then, for the branch activities, for the, for the Port Huron, the branch, the main floor, we have about 11 staff members. And then, children's library, we have nine staff members.
So, how many would remain over there versus how many would go over to this potentially new?
So, we, we would be looking at moving upwards of 30 to 35 of our behind-the-scenes staff members, the staff that support the entire library system. The branch teams for both the children's library and the adult library or the, the main floor will remain at main library, as well as the professional librarians who oversee specific collections like the Michigan Historical Documents, as well as the, the Law Library, as well as the Maker Space and the Digital Services. Those folks will stay there. So, I would say about half.
Question for Carrie. Is that the same space that the Public Defender's running?
Yes.
Okay, so that's right over the children's museum?
Yes, it is. And we do have partnerships with the children's museum. We regularly have a storytime that we perform over there as part of their program.
Seems like a good thing.
I think so.
Any other questions for Allison? We have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Item E, the Library System Copy Year Printer Agreement Applied Innovation.
That's one easy. I'll make motion, send it to full board.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F is Resolution 25 Dash 26, opposing the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Plan to Implement a Competitive Procurement Process for Prepaid Inpatient Health Plans. Kim, right?
Deidra.
Deidra, thank you. I apologize. Would you want to tell us more about this?
Actually, I'm just going to pass out a couple of the maps, but we just want to take two passing down.
First, I just want to thank you all for the ability to speak. I appreciate being given the opportunity to come here tonight before you. I want to start off with just a brief summary of what a prepaid inpatient health plan is and then get into the history of this procurement that we're talking about and lay out our concerns. So, the prepaid inpatient health plan, or the PIHP, is a managed care entity that's contracted by the state of Michigan to provide oversight to publicly funded mental health and substance use disorder services. Our oversight as Region 10 PIHP spans Genesee, Lapeer, Santa Leck and St. Clair Counties. We hold contracts with all four of the community mental health organizations in those four counties, as well as contracting with a network of substance use disorder providers throughout those four counties. Now, the map that I just passed out shows how the counties in Michigan or the regions in Michigan are divided currently. The one in the different colors, Region 10 is the brown one, as you'll see, that has the Genesee, Lapeer, Santa Leck and St. Clair County. The second printout is the current-looking proposal, subject to change, but breaking down Michigan into three regions. The top one, the central, and then there's one that's just made up of three counties. So, what that effectively does is takes what right now is four counties and puts it in the middle of instead being 44. Very easy to get lost in a sea of people. And that doesn't just speak to our counties and their interests, but the interests of the person served in the state of Michigan as well. So, where this came about, at the end of February, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services made an unexpected announcement indicating their intention to pursue a competitive procurement process for future PIHP contracts. They opened this idea up to public comment in the month of March. Subsequently, the numbers released indicated not very many people responded to that and those comments have not been made public. But, we do have several concerns with the proposed plan. First, that it appears to prioritize bids from nonprofit organizations, health plans or health insurance companies. These are companies you might know of as Blue Cross, Medicaid, or McLaren Health Plan, Priority, HAP, those larger organizations. It also precludes the current public PIHPs from bidding. Not just us as PIHPs, but also leaves out the possibility for the counties or the community mental health service programs from bidding either. So, that removes a lot of the county's ability to have oversight and our ability to partner with local organizations as well. It implies that the CMH could be one of a number of providers that these new managed care organizations could contract with, whether local or not. And, another immediate concern, the amount of funding that would have to be cut to make this possible. As we look at the overhead for those managed care organizations such as the Blue Cross, these private organizations, they have a 15% overhead. The PIHP is 2%. So, we're talking an immediate potential $500 million in cuts there to services to our consumers in the state. Our current structure is based on power that was given by the county. This current proposal removes that accountability and the transparency in the system as these private organizations are not subject to things like the Open Meetings Act, Freedom of Information Act and all of that. So, you're taking transparency out and as well as ignoring some, other states have rolled this out and addressed similar, having similar issues already having taken place. But, the most important thing, and I mentioned it when I started, it's the person in services. We serve a very vulnerable population with the public mental health system. These are persons with mental illness, substance use disorder, which we heard some about earlier with a different presentation. And, these are folks that are already at risk, persons with developmental disabilities. And it's destroying collaboration with other local organizations. The things that are helping us bridge gaps in those. us bridge gaps in those persons' care with local entities. It's undermining a county-based system that's providing services for the local community, which could put the county at risk as well. So, as you saw in your packet, the Michigan Association of Counties did send a letter earlier this month, or late last month, to Governor Whitmer expressing these concerns and how this could undermine service access and quality, erode local governance, and reduce transparency. So we're just asking that the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners stand with the Michigan Association of Counties and adopt a resolution to oppose the state's plan to implement this competitive procurement process. And urge Governor Whitmer to look at collaborating more with the public health system as it is, to work on these identified barriers that we already have, like the workforce and the lower budget cuts and all of that, instead of trying to roll in something that's actually going to make those problems larger. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Dave?
What is the timeframe where you want to get this? What timeframe that the state wants to take action on this?
Well, the, the state would like to open this up for bidding. The timeframe they've given us is late this summer, with a start date of the new entity being ten one twenty-six.
As I have not seen the resolution as of yet. There is one drafted already.
It's in your, in your packet.
We just added it to the.
We added it.
Well, I was in route probably, so I didn't see it. Isn't it, because my fault not looking at it. So, because this is a revised one. I didn't get the revised before coming here.
Sure.
So, you're saying I got a copy of my email?
I don't, I don't remember what day it was sent, but it was sent earlier this week.
It was added to the packet yesterday.
Yesterday. So attached to the online agenda packet, Dave.
Do you believe that this, we've got eighty-three counties. Do you believe that eighty-three counties have been affected by Governor Whitmer's decision at all?
I'm sorry, what was that?
You believe that if we didn't send a resolution and support it, you believe that Governor Whitmer is going to have any consideration for the eighty-three counties?
I would hope so.
So, we're taking action and, potentially anyways, to support this. I just got a feeling that I don't think she's, she's going to do what she wants.
Perhaps, but I, I also know, inaction, you know, you miss every shot you don't take, right?
Okay, thank you.
It's essentially a kind of a political statement. We're just saying whether we want to urge Governor Whitmer to take certain action, right? That's what we're looking for in the resolution, or not take certain action. There's nothing wrong with that. I mean, essentially, it's, we're, we're giving our board opinion on whether or not we support MDHHS's move to privatize versus, you know, right? That's, that's all you're really, we're not, we're not, what we do here doesn't change what the governor's going to do necessarily, correct?
Correct.
She's going to do whatever she wants, right? I find, I don't, I find myself not agreeing with a lot of what the governor does, but in something like this, I look at it, okay, competitive procurement processes are usually good, but why would they do that? What do you see as the underlying, whether political or financial, what's going on? What's, what's the real deal here? Why is the governor, after all these years, taking something that works and wanting to privatize it? What, what's your take on that?
Honestly, that's the question I'm asking myself.
Okay.
Because in looking at this, there are so many concerns, and what we've been told as far as what the rationale behind this is, to give consumers choice of who their payer is. All of that sounds great until you realize that the consumer is who is getting lost in this sea of...
So you're not, you're not buying, I'm from the government and I'm here to help you. You're thinking maybe there's something else going on, right?
I don't, I, I, I have no idea what's going on, to be honest with you.
I'm just giving you my thoughts, looking at the resolution, so, okay, there, there must be some reason, ostensibly competitive procurement is to save money. So let's assume, okay, the governor wants to save money, that's a good thing. Okay, he wants to do that. So am I going to do a resolution that says, "Governor, don't save money." I don't know that I want to do that. So I'm just trying to work my way through what this is all about. Stakeholders are expressing concern, historical, you know, governance and all that. But the, the grants, like right now, like your position, who do you, where do you work? What do you do?
I work for the prepaid inpatient health plan, Region Ten.
Okay, and, so, that, your organization probably gets, you have your board and you get your direction on how you function in that, that way, right?
Yes, we have a board.
And then you have probably grants and contracts with the state?
We are contracted by the state of Michigan.
Which also provide many strings and conditions and, you know, all these things, metrics and all that, right? So the state right now has the ability, without privatizing it, to affect delivery of services through contracts and grants and so forth?
Yes.
So yet, they still want now to say, to privatize it? I, I don't understand, I don't like voting, you know, to do things I don't understand. I don't understand, first of all, why MDHHS wants to do that, why the governor wants to do that, but, you know, for what it's worth, our opinion for Governor Whitmer will carry probably very little weight, and I don't know that there's really a need to do this because they're going to do whatever they want anyway. But, I guess, and I don't understand, you don't understand why they're doing it.
I echo your concerns, because to me, the reasons that they're laying out about doing this is exactly the opposite of what doing this will cause.
Yeah, well...
I'm with you in that it doesn't make sense, that's, that's the problem.
But does it make sense to tell the governor to not do something? You know, I don't know, is it stupid or is it good? I can't tell. I can, I can't tell from any of this, so I'm not going to vote for it, because it's like, I don't know what this is. Why is she doing it? Why would she want to do it? You know, why do we need a resolution to tell her not to do it? And what good would it do to tell the governor that does what she wants anyway, not to do something? So it's just like a exercise in futility, so, that's my two cents with it.
Is it possible that DHS has identified some gaps, some individuals who might not be receiving services, who need services, or perhaps the services that are being provided are being, are stretched too thin? I can tell you, years ago, DHS had a monopoly on the foster care system and providing services to abuse and neglect families. And then, they invited in and, and opened up that system to sort of what you're talking about here, wherein there are private agencies that came in, and now they also assist DHS in providing what's called purchase of service, services to these families that, that need to have wraparound services, life skills services, things like that. That seems to have worked quite well in assisting DHS to fill in those gaps for those foster families that were otherwise lacking in, in receiving services from DHS or not receiving them at all because there weren't enough. So, is that possible?
But we're not bringing in any other new services at all. It's just changing the, the oversight organization to be a private company like Blue Cross, that if, if you're the consumer and you're trying to find out more information about who is paying for your services or get, get that taken care of, instead of going into a local office or calling a local number, you're now calling Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and dealing with whatever that does.
Well, I'm not suggesting new services. I'm suggesting the services being provided are perhaps stretched too thin, and maybe DHS thinks this might be an answer, sort of like they did with the purchase of service situation in the foster care system. Do you think that's, might be possible?
I don't see how this program would actually do that as it's outlined right now.
Do you know of other CMH organizations across the state that are their own authority? I know many are under the governance of county boards. Here in St. Clair County, our CMH is, is its own authority statutorily. So, I hear one of the primary concerns here is that if this happened, it would remove authority from local county boards over CMH. But, our CMH is its own authority, so, that doesn't really seem to apply here. I also echo Steve's concerns about making a resolution. I'm not sure Governor Whitmer...
I think the entity is separate from CMH. I don't think they're CMH. Am I, am I not correct? They're separate, they're not, they're not CMH, they're...
We are, we hold a contract with CMH.
Okay.
Right, but, yeah, we are not CMH.
And one of the, one of the biggest concerns voiced in the, in the letter that was provided in the agenda packet was that if this went forward, it would remove local control over local CMH agencies that contract with, with you folks, is that right?
Correct.
And here in St. Clair County, CMH is its own authority, so they're already in charge of their own, we already have no governing.
Right, and I know that, that's another discussion that's ongoing, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van Bosh, did you have a question?
Can we vote on this?
Why are we voting?
Moved to call the question, that's appropriate.
We don't have a motion yet.
Yeah. So, there's, there's...
I had to say that it's just, sometimes it's just challenging. You get something at the eleventh hour, and then you're just supposed to know everything and make a decision for the betterment of the community. So, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to get behind something when you don't have time to really see the people.
So the, the question's been called?
Just one, yeah, but she said it wouldn't take effect till October of twenty twenty-six.
That is when MDHHS hopes to have the new entity identified and up and running.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct, so I, I anticipate the, the bid process, if that were to move forward, would be happening in the next couple of months.
Restate the motions, this is what's on the, on the table. Just to move it to full board, right?
There is no motion.
Oh, I thought someone moved it to full board.
Yeah, there's no more motion, and it's just the resolution to oppose the plan to implement a competitive procurement process for the PIHPs.
Forward or fine lag?
Forward.
But there's no motion forward. We already had a motion, because we have a discussion.
No.
I'll make the motions on full board. You haven't had that yet.
I'd support it.
We can say yes or no.
We, we've had lots of discussion, is there any more? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Opposed?
Nay.
Sounded like three to four?
I believe so as well.
Okay, four to three, so it did pass to go to full board.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other human services to come before the board this evening? Hearing none. Item nine for information only, the May points of interest for the Health Department.
Motion received and filed.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, a motion to receive and file packets.
So moved.
Any support?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Calling the County Board of Judiciary and Public Safety Committee to order police. Roll call.
Commissioner Angie? Present. Commissioner Beeden? Present. Commissioner Trello? Present. Commissioner Sumasco?
Present.
Commissioner Felix?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Van Bosh?
Here. Not seeing any additions, can I get a motion for the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Carried. They have no sheets for citizens to address the board. Moving on to updates. General update.
Good evening. I did send out a, a item to your email this afternoon, questions that, at the suggestion of Commissioner Felix, I had to go through and kind of write down all the questions that were presented to the board, and we did provide some answers. Does anyone not have a copy of that? Would anyone like a hard copy of that?
I want you to hand out a hard copy.
Absolutely.
If you got them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have a representative, two representatives, excuse me, from the JTI company. I've asked that they go on video so we can, we're not dealing with a voice in the sky, we can put a face to a voice here. So, if Matt Sorenson and Elliott, or at least Matt could turn on the camera up there in the corner, I'd like to introduce officially, it's their faces here, both Matt and Elliott are here to answer any questions that you may have. Briefly, I just wanted to inform the board that the judiciary met yesterday with court administration and representatives from the county clerk's office. And moving forward, I know there was some question about, I know Administrator Gerard got up here last meeting and talked about the need for district court or lack thereof. So at that meeting, the judges determined that it would be appropriate to remove district court from the project and move forward with the circuit court, the probate court, and the juvenile court. Right now, I know that I, I've requested the folks from JTI to present us a cost breakdown of what that would look like. I know there has been some work already done in district court that I'm assuming they would like to be paid for, but with approximately forty percent of the project undone, we're looking, hopefully there'll be some cost savings. So that's in the works. We also have had conversations about the testing windows. I know that was a large concern of the commissioners, and that certainly is a negotiable item. I've had that discussion with the folks from that, from the software company, so that five days is not a, not a hard and fast item, and that will be something that will be worked on and will be prepared to present to you at the, at the next board meeting, full board. So, again, the questions that were answered were, were just kind of, I certainly can go over them if you'd like, or if you have any questions about specifics, but I, I hope I had all the questions that, that you asked and provided appropriate answers, but I would certainly entertain any questions that you have at this time.
In the answers that you gave us, it says a hundred, so I only got like four, because we've got lots to do tonight. It says a hundred and eighty-two thousand including, includes district, but of course, now that we're going forward, we're not going to have district, so what's going to be the annual cost?
Again, Commissioner, that's something that they're going to have to cost out. I know that was, that was kind of a, you know, we, we met in the executive session, I know Attorney Fletcher was there as well, and that was something that was lofted out to them. I know that their, a couple of members of their administrative team have been on time off this week, so they were unable to get to the, kind of run it up the chain, but we absolutely should have something for you by the next meeting to see what those costs are going to be.
If I can jump in?
I'm sorry, Matt, go ahead.
I'm sorry, that, that annual license and maintenance cost, that's based on users and user count, so we would take into consideration those licenses that would not be used by district court. So there would be a, a potential reduction in that. We need to take a look at what those users are and factor all of that information in.
This would be what you, you want to use, and of course, we're looking at this on account that the state isn't very friendly to work with, you're going to have to wait in line to get in line to actually have something. If everything went fantastic and we got in line, what would be the cost to go with the state rather than us?
What would be the cost to go with the state? So the cost, the cost to go with the state, there is no cost to go with the state. So they, they don't provide, or they don't, they don't charge you any annual maintenance fees. That's something that changed about two, three years ago. There was a, an appropriation from the, from the legislature to the judiciary to account for case management systems. One thing I, I will note though, is that is a case management system only. And what we're looking to implement with this project is also a document management system, so...
Fantastic. You're going to have other questions, so I'm just going to, the financial part, this is a million-dollar-plus contract, and then a hundred and eighty-two thousand annual, when we could be getting this for free potentially. It wouldn't be the same service, but these are taxpayer dollars, so I'm concerned about that. If the job can get done without spending a hundred and eighty-two thousand a year, I should be considering that.
And, and absolutely, and, and again, that, that maintenance cost includes things that we don't have today. We don't, we don't have a document management system today which allows us to go paperless, which, again, if you talk about efficiencies, no paper, less staff, all the fun things that come with...
Something similar, not this complex with my own business, so I pay an annual fee and they have all the maintenance costs included in my accounting software, so, same thing, but much, much more.
Anyone else?
Does that maintenance cost include legislative updates?
So as, and that, that's addressed in the, in one of the questions. So, again, it depends on the legislative update, right? So if somebody, if they come out with a new form or they mandate a new case type, those are things that we're going to be trained in terms... So, if somebody, if they come out with a new form or they mandate a new case type, those are things that we're going to be trained internally to, to adjust the workflows and to, and to fix those things. If they come out with a large legislative update that requires, uh, you know, something more robust, and again, I'm going to use the, the, uh, the clean slate legislation, that's something that we would have to go back to this, to the software company to, uh, to, to address.
Who'd be in charge of determining what's large and what's a small legislative update?
If we can do it, then we would do it. If we can't do it, then we would have to go to the, we would have to go. Now, I, I can tell you that we have a staff. We have two individuals who are, who are, uh, are being trained on creating reports and searches and workflow changes and adding those types of things in. It's a very user-friendly system as far as customizable things. Building it is tough, but once that's built and we, and we, you know, have to do something, it frankly depends on, on what that, what that, what that addition is.
But the question was, are the legislative updates going to be included in that maintenance fee or will they be extra money?
That would be extra money for, for, again, it depends on what the, what we consider a large or small legislative update.
What, what other kind of support is provided in exchange for that, um, that maintenance fee? Does it include, uh, ongoing support and bug fixes, uh, for bugs that arise in the system?
I, I, I would refer that, uh, question to Matt.
Yeah, it includes, uh, support for any bugs that are found in the system. It includes upgrades, so when a new version comes out with new features, it includes those upgrades to, to new features and, uh, new, new versions. Ongoing maintenance, and if, if you have a system outage, uh, we would be called and we would help you work through that. The current system that we're putting in place is going to be on your servers, so we would help and assist with that. We certainly won't be the DBA or the database administrator and run your servers, but we can help to troubleshoot and make sure, um, proper software is installed and things like that. And then going back to legislative requests, we would certainly collectively work with Mike and, and his team to determine what's large and what's small, and we want to make sure that they have the tools to be efficient and to handle most of these things on their own. It'd be those large, large things, like you said, the clean slate legislation, or if the state came out and said, here's a new case type, or here's new fees that need to be put in, or new dispersments or allocations with monies. Financials get kind of tricky, so we, we would want to help through those types of matters.
Okay, and you're going to provide that help for the cost of that maintenance fee and nothing additional. Is that correct?
Legislative changes are typically, uh, fees, and that's talked about in the contract itself, I believe.
I understand there might be a, a rather large contract amendment coming our way. Are these things going to be specifically spelled out in that new contract amendment?
Sure, we can spell them out in the contract amendment.
Are you going to be able to provide a product manual for the clerks and the employees in the court to use and, and figure out how to use it without having to call you all the time?
Yes, and we, uh, we, with the court and the clerks to develop a product manual because typically our implementations are very customized to the court. It's not a custom off-the-shelf product. Uh, it, it's, it's, we're working with the court to customize to their processes, so we make sure that we document things and we can use that for training material.
Can I ask a qu- question, here?
Please.
According to the, they're going to be instituting MyFile soon. Is this already set up in urinal?
So, so the MyFile integration is included in this contract. Now, that is completely dependent upon when the state allows us to go on MyFile. I can tell you right now that there are currently, and I want to say, I, I could be wrong, it's either one or two circuit courts that are, uh, using MyFile. One's, uh, Grand Traverse County, and there may be another one.
So, there's, there's a lot more than that, Mike?
In, in cir-, well, there's a lot in district, but, but in circuit?
Yes.
What, what counties are those?
Uh, Wayne County, Oakland County, Macomb County.
So, Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb utilize e-filing through their own system. They are grandfathered in as far as e, as part of an e-file project that was done fifteen, ten, fifteen years ago.
Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb use MyFile. That's all I'm telling you.
Okay.
But will they be, will this be ready to handle that, or?
Yes.
Are we going to have to have, uh, an upcharge to get that works?
We're already paying for it. It's something that will come whenever the state says you're good to go. That's, that will already have been paid for. It's a post-go-live interface.
It's co-, it's contracted, and there's been a contract amendment, I believe, that made that a post-go-live interface.
Mike, you said a minute ago that Journal is, uh, also a document management system. Isn't that what MyFile is?
MyFile, uh, does not provide workflow beyond the point of filing. There, the, the paperwork comes in, but that's it. There's no, there's no, you, you can pay to have that done through, through the, uh, ImageSoft or I3, they call it now, but no. MyFile is not a document management system in the, in the regard, in the spirit of what we're talking about. It is just a front door for e-filing, and then many courts, unless they've implemented their own e-file, or so their own document management system, are printing those things off and putting them into paper files.
When you say document management system, do you mean that MyFile isn't providing electronic copies of documents? They're not storing them or providing them? Is that what you're saying?
They are.
That's also not true.
They are, but think of it this way. Think of, uh, the life cycle of a file. You, you, you know, you, today, you, you walk in with your sheet of paper, clerk, they put it in a paper file, that paper file lives, it goes up to judges, they hand sign, they wet-sign documents. A document management system is something where it comes in and it doesn't exist in a file. It, you know, it would go to Judge Damon to sign a warrant. It would go to the friend of court. It would go to probation staff. It's, it, it's a digital file. MyFile ends at the point of filing, unless you have an additional add-on system that contains workflows and contains other modules to allow that to occur, interfaces and things of that nature. This is going to have an interface with the friend of the court, with the on-base, right? So, there's no paper that's going to go between those two systems. MyFile is just the front door. It's not everything that comes beyond that. There are counties that have things beyond it, like Courtview and Macomb. MyFile, and, and again, I didn't, I'm not aware of circuit court using MyFile in Macomb, but they may. I, I could be incorrect in that.
Oh, they do.
But, but everything that happens beyond that, as far as workflow and document management, is Courtview, which is a different company, which is a third-party vendor. Um, same thing with Oakland County. They have kind of a homemade system. So, MyFile ends at that point.
Oakland County's going in the state system.
They are.
It's my understanding that, um, that implementation is going to be forthcoming very soon.
They're going to begin, that's about a three-year process.
Is it, uh, Matt, is that your name from Journal?
Yes, yes.
Thanks, Matt. Um, I, uh, noted at the last meeting that the question was posed by one of my other esteemed commissioners, uh, what Journal, what the Journal Company would do in the event that the board voted to table the vote on the, uh, change order that was, uh, being discussed previously. I believe your response was that you would continue working. It's my understanding that you stopped working. Can you tell me when you stopped working?
Um, pretty shortly after. I went and talked to my senior leadership, and they said, well, if we don't know what we're doing, it's going to affect other things. We, we don't want to continue on down the road. Now, we've had pretty close contact with Mike since that meeting. I think Mike and I, we've probably talked a few times a week. I'm anxious to keep going, and I want to keep the work going, but if we don't know the direction we're headed, and we don't know if district court's going to be involved, it's, it's hard to keep the process moving.
But you weren't working on district court at the, during the last, the last meeting that we had, where you, you were just working on circuit court, is that?
We were still working on district court and circuit court at the same time, yes.
Okay, so you stopped all work, however, right after the last meeting?
Right, exactly. And we, we met with Mike and senior leadership from Journal Technologies. You know, we were pretty open and fair, or open a, about what was going on and, and talking to the court, so.
I.
But I, I want it, I want to keep working. I want to get this thing done.
Um, it, it's being represented that the project is approximately sixty or seventy percent completed at this point. Is that right?
Sixty, about sixty percent complete, yes.
Are you able to demonstrate that for the board?
To provide a demo of, of what we currently have? Sure, we can do that. I, I don't, I could not do it right now. I could have my team set up a demo and, and show you though.
I think that would be most helpful because I'm hearing from a number of people that, um, there aren't any, uh, platforms or practice, uh, platforms for any of the judges to use while they're on their bench, um, and, and that, uh, there was a practice platform that was open that everyone called the Sandbox, which apparently was shut down also recently, and, and, uh, people could no longer get into it at all. So, I'm, I'm unclear about the, the progress as well as, um, why it is that, that none of these employees have any kind of a practice platform seven years after.
I don't, I don't believe that that's true because the, um, the application lives on your servers. Um, it's installed there. You can get, you can get into it. Staff and any court employee that has access can log in, can enter cases, can run through case initiation, can make changes to cases, can dispose of cases, all, all of that. Uh, that, that surprises me to hear that they are saying the Sandbox is closed.
I had heard that, um, in the weeks following the last meeting from a number of employees.
I, I respectfully don't, don't believe that, and have not heard that.
So, just as it relates to the change order, which I understand might be changing now, but you indicated that you stopped work because you didn't know if the change order items were going to be needed. Uh, that's why I want to talk about three specific items. In fact, the only three items on the change order request that were related to circuit court, just three. Two of them, I was very confused to learn about why they needed to be changed seven years into the contract because these are longtime Michigan laws, um, such as, uh, when, when, when an individual posts bond on a criminal defendant's behalf. The Michigan law requires that that bond, um, unless forfeited or revoked, uh, is, is returned to the person who posted it. And so, on the change order list, uh, there's an indication that Journal was not aware that that name would need to be included in the system. That's a Michigan law, and it's a pretty rudimentary thing. So, I, I guess I would be curious about why that change would stop you from continuing to work between the last meeting and now.
I, I think it, correct me, I, I may be wrong, but it was making sure that there was code established that put that individual's name into the header so that we knew who that money was being returned to.
Right.
And that was, that would affect certain interfaces and workflows that would be worked on right now.
Okay, um, a, another statutory provision is, uh, there's a, a fifteen-dollar fee that has been a longtime Michigan law for, for a garnishment. Um, it was also on the change order, um, we're seven years into the project, and you're saying that the fifteen-dollar fee is, is a surprise to you, and you need to add it now or else you can't continue working. Is that one of the reasons you stopped working?
We, we did not make these changes up. These were changes that were given to us. We, we didn't just arbitrarily say, I think this needs to change. We walked through the application, looked through everything, and these were changes that were given to us by the court.
I wanted to ask you a couple of questions about the upcoming amendment, which I'm sure the other commissioners will be excited to see. Um, I, I, and I, I was quite surprised, as I know, were a number of other people, when I learned that every time any Journal representative travels to the state of Michigan, the taxpayers of St. Clair County are paying your airfare, your hotel, your rental car, and your food bill. Is that accurate?
That's not accurate. That was one trip. We've had many, many trips up there where Journal Technologies has, um, put in the bill. There was one trip in January where Mike agreed to pay for three representatives to be there.
So, in the, uh, in the contract amendment, that will be specifically spelled out, that those costs will be on Journal going forward?
We can spell that out however we want, but there has been one trip for three individuals over the last five years that has been paid by the county. Everything else has been paid for by Journal Technologies, and we were coming up there once a month for an extended period of time.
There have been some concerns expressed to me regarding what will happen with the data, uh, the data that it wa-, is part of the, the project, the data that belongs to the court. At the end of the project, some individuals have expressed concern to me about who will own that data, and will it be vulnerable to, uh, to the court no longer owning it? And so, at their behest, I wanted to request that that also be included in any contract amendment, that the court remains the sole owner, owner of its data.
You are the owner of the data. The data resides on your servers. It's your court data. Journal Technologies, it's not our data. We have to VPN in to get into your live production database. You can kick us out at any time. That is your data. We have never made any inclination that we own the data.
Thank you, and, um, just one last question. Um, the original contract I know listed district court is accounting for three hundred thousand dollars of that contract price. If the contract amendment removes district court entirely, will there be a commensurate price reduction?
There would be a price reduction, and that's something that we're working through, we're working through right now. We're going to meet with, uh, JTI senior leadership and myself and Mike next week to talk through that.
When do you plan to start working again?
As soon as we can. I, I want to see a go-live in, in June of next year. I want to get this project done, and I want Mike to be happy with the product that he has.
Okay, this is the last question, I promise. I know there's.
Sure.
Serious concerns expressed by just about everybody I talked to about the reduction in the testing period. The new contract amendment, I presume, will not contain reductions in these testing periods.
We want to make sure that we test effectively. We want to make sure that we fix and resolve all of the bugs that are found as soon as they are found. We have struggled with testing throughout the entire project and getting testing to happen in a timely manner. We understand that the court and the clerks and the other judicial staff have their regular day jobs, and this is on top of everything else, and we want to do everything that we can to help get through this testing cycle and the testing process. And not just go through happy path testing, but we want to work to find the one-offs, and, you know, we want to walk through that and make sure we have some sort of agreement or it's revised in, in a contract modification.
Thanks, Matt.
But Mike and I have had lots of conversations about these testing phases and testing cycles, and we want to make sure everyone's comfortable with it.
Thank you.
Start with a follow-up from Commissioner Angie. So, your answer to Commissioner Angie's last question was yes or no?
As far as the, the reduction in the testing cycle?
Her question was very, very simple, and I appreciate your, your long answer about all this need for testing. The question was, the contract has a provision for testing. To me, testing, the longer you have to test, the better. We certainly have to do our part, but she asked, will you be negotiating from the, the Journal perspective to reduce the time allowed for testing on the current contract? And that should be a yes or no?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Now, what I look at, you know, I, the Board of Commissioners is an elected body, as are the courts, and Michigan law provides we need to fund the courts to a level of serviceability, and that's a legal standard. And the management of the courts is the courts. I can give you a lot of people in, in rows with little wooden hammers will tell you exactly that. Their business is their business. We need to fund their business. So, I kind of step back on this and look to Mike and the courts to tell me, what are we doing here? It ended up on our desk last month as a change order, and I'll ask you a question just to get a feel for the company because, you know, last month it was presented, sixty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. Scope of work is in an appendix titled Structural Change Detail, nine pages, and I asked somebody on the phone, I think a Matt or Mike, somebody, I said, it bothered me. I, I'm an attorney. I said, look, we have, um, all these items in the change detail. Are they within the, the scope of work as bid? He said, yes. I said, had Nick, our program manager, program developer, wherever he was, not signed off on that, you would have done that if necessary to serve that, to produce that program. He said, yes. And at no additional cost, he said, yes. So, then, you know, here we are now. We have a different court clerk, different circuit court administrator, different district court administrator, different Board of Commissioners, different cir-, circuit judges and chief circuit judges. And here we are in 2022, you know, with the, um, program manager change, and he signs off on something that appeared to me to be a mistake. So, my question was, why wouldn't, you know, in good faith, the company say, look, we're not going to charge you sixty-four thousand dollars. We're just going to, Nick made a mistake, and we would have done it anyway, so we'll just do it. I mean, that's, that's how I run my practice. I wouldn't like nick some, I said nicking somebody, not to be rude, but I kind of, I wondered, why would you reach out in that fashion? Just, it seemed, it seemed, um, adversarial, and it. Just it seemed it seemed adversarial, and it kind of bothered me. Do you know, you know why that it even showed up in that nature? Why you would ask for a change order for sixty four thousand dollars when the contract calls for payment at the end and you're still in the midst of it? Can you explain that to me just briefly?
Because it's work that we have to go back and redo. It's time that we have to factor in. We're already significantly over budget on this, and we've expended a lot of time and a lot of money, and now we have to go back and we have to refactor.
Okay. Let me just get to the bottom line. So like, and this is for Mike. Now, it sounds like what you're saying, Mike, is the court wants to go forward with the Journal but without District Court. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And if we go forward with Journal without District Court, we're going to renegotiate the issues that Carrie brought up and some of the other things on the prices, and that's going to come back to us, right?
Correct.
Okay. And the change order from last month becomes moot. Is that, we're not going to deal with that as a change order now, we're going to do something different, right?
Yes, I can't speak to that.
Maybe this fellow here can answer that, too.
Well, I think that's probably an Attorney Fletcher in their attorney conversation, but yes, that's that's our hope.
It's going to get rolled in. We're not going to be dealing with the change order on the former scope of work. We're going to have a new scope of work. All of this stuff, court satisfied, we're going to fund you the way, the program you wanted, you selected, and the way you selected it, and this business of the change order is going to moot, it's going to be a whole different amendment to the contract that will absorb or subsume that. And I, does that sound correct, sir? Is that? Somebody?
Yeah, yes.
I don't know.
I'll just wait for Matt there. Yes, that's.
Gary, does that sound correct from your perspective?
My understanding was the change order was to redo District Court, and the linchpin of this whole thing is District Court in or out. They're out. So, yeah, to me, it should be, if it's not a moot.
It'll be addressed or wrapped into it?
Exactly.
That's my thing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other questions?
Just a statement.
Go ahead.
The initial contract called for a twelve to twenty-four month completion for in excess of one million dollars. And if I was hiring a roof contractor to fix a leaky roof because we needed this done, now it's five additional years, my roof is leaking even worse, and this contract has failed for seven years. Now, we can put the onus on some of the employees at the county, but this companies throughout the nation, they've seen a lot of hiccups in route. They should have the expertise to do their job. A roofer knows how to do it, get them done. If he can't get the leaking roof fixed, I'm going to have a tough time supporting this, but I'll talk to you more if necessary.
Well, and I can respond to that, you know, ultimately, again, and I think you can drive down the road to McLaren and see how far along they are, and they're, you know, what was supposed to be a four-year project eight years later. Software projects are software projects, and they're not easy. And and as I indicated before, I don't want to be a Saginaw County. I don't want to be a county that's in the paper because people are getting bench warrants issued, cases aren't getting done timely. This was a very, and I'll, you know, and Matt can probably attest this, too. I think they were a bit off a little more than they could chew, not that they could chew, but I think they underestimated what this project was. I think they underestimated the data conversion component of it. I think they underestimated the workflow component of it. I think they underestimated the complexity of courts in Michigan. And ultimately, this needs to be done correct, because if it's not, we're going to have to answer for a lot more than just what we're dealing with right now.
And I don't see it getting done right. If it's taking this long to get it, I mean, we're going to get, we're going to get a Taj Mahal of court programs.
I think with District Court peeled out of this, you're going to see some movement.
What were the reactions from the judges when they had, when you guys had a meeting?
Apprehension. You know, and that's the issue with, you know, the judges, you know, my job is to keep stuff off a judge's plate. So they were admittedly probably not involved in the whole process. I think that they were probably brought in at the eleventh hour with this. I will indicate to you that that some of the judges have have heard a narrative that is probably not the entire narrative. So there's, there is some apprehension, but there is some hope that we need to move forward. We purchased a product, we signed a contract. We need to work toward the end and have this done. As I indicated before, Circuit Court is on a system that is way, it's broken, and it can it can fail anytime, and we have nothing.
Now, one of the selling points to this was to have all the courts working together with the same program moving forward, because I use that to look up information on people, and you bounce from one different program to another. And like right now, I don't even know if I can look anything up on Circuit.
You can. Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's all, it's all through the, it's through the MyCourt system, but you have to go to two different sites. And unfortunately, moving forward, you're going to have to go to two different sites.
Now, have all the end users been contacted what the, what it's going to look like, the jail, especially like transfers, because they're going to have to pull scheduling and everything else out? Have they been approached yet?
So there's an interface with the jail that is post-go-live. So the, what was built in the contract is an interface between our system and the jail system that will make it substantially easier to see, like, you'll be able to look in our system to see if someone's in jail. And they'll be able instead to, instead of sitting in the courtroom writing down orders from the judge, to just have it sent over into the system like it used to be. The OAS four hundred system used to do that. This would have that that component, and that is an interface that's built into this project. For now, Circuit, Juvenile, and Probate Courts.
Any other questions?
Just one, sorry. With the District Court coming out, doesn't that create now additional work for the Circuit Court clerks who will now have to manually process bindovers and appeals and motions to quash back from Circuit Two District?
So we can pull the inner, the information on a bind over from the prosecutor system, from the carpal system. So that will be, the data will come in. The documents coming in, it would be the exact same as it is today. They'll actually have less work because they won't have to enter that data. There's no talking back and forth today, so it'll be the same. Now, I will tell you that as part of the negotiations with this, I would like to see an interface with JAS to the new system to somehow work around that. And Matt and I have had those discussions, so they're not going to be doing any more work than they are today.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time. I certainly appreciate this. The court does, too. Thank you.
Thanks for the update, Mike. Thank you.
We have no conceptual initiatives in the whole business. New business seven A, twenty twenty-six Recovery Court Grant Application for Final Action.
I'll make that motion for final action.
Second.
Any questions on it? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Van damme?
Yes. Moving on to Thomas Reuters Westlaw Agreement Renewal.
Motion to send that to the full board.
Support.
Any questions on that one? Yes.
I hate to sound like a stickler tonight, but I'm looking at an over, a bill in excess of twelve thousand dollars for a research engine. There's a free research engine on the State Bar website that I use all the time and have for the past twelve, fifteen years. It's called FastCase. In my opinion, it works better than Westlaw. Now, I understand these are MIDC monies. It's just my opinion that those monies could be certainly better used, maybe for employee raises or to shore up the out of control cost of health insurance that seems to be cutting people's pay all over the county. I just wanted to say that.
You wouldn't know this, you wouldn't know this, Dave, but I wonder, I mean, we have, who's using it on behalf of the courts? Is it the judges and their research clerks? Is there anyone using that? I've never.
This is for the public defender.
Oh, it's for the public defender. Mike, can you address that? Is that why it's important or not important from your office perspective? If Dave's okay with that?
So to answer Commissioner Angie's question or inquiry, we've been using Westlaw for years now. We, MIDC, the state sort of gives us the direction of it ain't broke, don't fix it. They don't have any problem providing funds for that. They understand that, for example, with Westlaw, you have Keysight, which does the shepherdizing program, which the attorneys, Ms. Angie, Mr. Samasco, and Mr. Fletcher will be familiar with, which assures that if I go in front of Judge Damon and I have a case and I'm citing a case, that it is the most updated case. Frankly, I don't know of any systems using FastCase. I mean, I'm intrigued by this idea. I hadn't, I hadn't heard of it, but most of the systems that I communicate with are using either Westlaw or Nexus, Lexus Nexus, and frankly, Westlaw is slightly more cost efficient for us.
Further question, Mike. So you're, you're, this is money, the way it flows, the MIDC provides funding based on a formula, reimburses the county. These are funds that would come from the state.
Strictly state money.
Not from the general fund as such.
That's correct.
And this is something you're requesting as a department head?
That's right. Thank you.
Any other questions while he's up here? Because it's still hot in here.
Somebody get a fan for Dave.
I don't know. I guess now that we heard about FastLaw, would it be something that you'd be interested in looking into to see if it was a route that you would take?
Sure, we could look into it. It's been, now, we've already submitted our budget to, our budget is, works on the state fiscal year, so our budget's already come before the board. We've already incorporated that into the budget for this upcoming fiscal year. I would certainly have no problem looking into other forms of legal research platforms. But the reality of it is, the two signature platforms are Westlaw and Lexus Nexus.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Sorry, Mike.
Gary. Local Emergency Planning Committee Appointment.
Memphis community.
Oh, Memphis, I'm trying to move forward.
Don't forget Memphis, it's hot in here.
It is hot in here. Memphis Community Schools Resource Officer Agreement.
Motion to send it to full board.
Second.
Any questions on this one? Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gary. Now the local Emergency Planning Committee Appointments.
Motion to send that to full board.
Support.
Any questions on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gary. Sheriff's Office Virtual Reality Training System.
Make a motion to send that to full board.
Support.
Any questions on that one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gary. Port Huron Area School Resource Officer Agreement.
Make a motion to send that to full board.
Support.
Any questions on that one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gary. Wage Adjustment, Sheriff's Office, Marine Patrol, Dive Team, and Special Deputies.
Make a motion to send that to full board.
Support. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gary. Twenty twenty-six Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Grant Application.
I'll move to send that to full board.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gary. Courthouse Stairlift Architectural Services.
Make a motion to send that to full board. Second.
Carrie, what kind of stair lift is this? It's not the single chair lift?
No, we are looking for a platform system. Yep, where someone can remain on their wheelchair and be lifted up the stairs.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gary. Any other judiciary or public safety matters? Can I get a motion to receive and file packets?
Still moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unad adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Works Committee to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Angie?
Present.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Samasco?
Present.
Commissioner Phillips?
Present.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Van damme?
Here.
Commissioner Trello?
Here. Is there any additions, deletion? It's hot in here. Additions, deletions, deletions or changes to the agenda?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have two citizens wishing to be heard this evening. We'll go with Ms. Dawn Wiki.
In twenty twenty, in twenty twenty-two, in years previous, there's three quarters of a million dollars spent annually in payment to CTI to manage the landfill. In twenty twenty-three, it was over a million dollars paid just that one year to manage the landfill. In twenty twenty-four, two point one million dollars paid to CTI to manage the landfill. In twenty twenty-three, there was a catastrophic failure at the landfill. CTI had no idea what the hell was going on. The citizens had to get Eagle involved to force something to be done. Nobody knew what to do, but yet we're paying this company to manage the landfill. It was made very clear at the May twenty-second Eagle Town Hall, there were eight infractions that they're fining St. Clair County for, seven of which were maintenance failures. We're paying CTI to manage the landfill, and they're not doing preventative maintenance to the point that we had a catastrophic failure, and we continue to pay them? And here's the kicker, Eagle is fining St. Clair County a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the failures of CTI to maintain the landfill. But according to CTI's contract, they're not responsible for the fines. The people are. This just blows my mind how how this has happened. Something needs to be, someone needs to be held accountable for what happened in twenty twenty-three. All hands are pointing at CTI. They were paid to manage and maintain the landfill. They failed to do so. They're not responsible for the fines that St. Clair County is now incurring. I don't, I don't understand this at all. And when my, my county commissioner asked for bids for a replacement management company for the landfill, I hear a lot of opposition and pushback. CTI has made it very evident, they are not, they are not capable of maintaining that landfill. And somebody's head needs to roll. If it was me, I would be looking for other companies, looking to see what they have to offer in management of that landfill.
You need to wrap it up, please.
And and then letting CTI know, you cannot fulfill what what the people need, what the county need, and we're going to sever our agreement. Thank you.
TJ Gaffney?
In the interest of the heat factor, I will keep this short. TJ Gaffney, I have applied for the position recently vacated by Caleb Gordon on the Parks and Recreation Commission. I grew up in the area historically. My family's been here since post-Civil War and have been involved in several projects, historical and otherwise, in the area with the potential of the extension of the Rails to Trails, Wadamsavoka Trail. I work for the Railroad Conrail Assets and have worked with other entities in developing historical information in relation to those types of transfers and or documenting those types of things. And I have worked with Mr. Galore on several other historical-related projects, both county and city-related. So just wanted to, if there are any questions, just wanted to at least give the opportunity.
Thank you. Moving on to updates for Item A, Road Commission, twenty twenty-four. Moving on to updates for Item A, Road Commission twenty-five Annual Report. Had that in your documents.
Need a motion to receive and file? I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Second update would be the Eagle Landfill Consent Order meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner Trello. On May twenty-second in Kimball Township, Eagle representatives came in from Lansing and their Warren offices and conducted a question and answer meeting for the residents and the officials of St. Clair County. I was able to attend the Eagle Landfill Consent Order question and answer meeting. I found the meeting to be well-attended with many people in attendance. There were seven individuals from Eagle's Lansing and Warren offices. Lots of relevant questions were asked by residents, Kimball Township Supervisor Rob Usikowski, and me. Residents expressed a general lack of trust in the landfill and the county as to their ability to continue controlling odors properly, and expressed anxiousness as to what's next for the landfill. Which of course Eagle could not answer, and neither could I because of the county closed session of February twenty-sixth. Several residents and Supervisor Usikowski expressed interest in obtaining corrective action and holding people accountable for the pollution to our community. The community at large was appreciative of all Eagle had done to alleviate the odors in our neighborhoods. I answered what questions I could after the meeting and passed out business cards to residents that had additional questions. All in all, I found it an excellent meeting conducted by Eagle with lots of questions professionally answered. And I learned a lot, as I'm sure many residents did too. I want to take a moment here and apologize to the members of this board. As you all know, I am extremely passionate about this subject. And sometimes passionate can lead you in a place you shouldn't go. I made the comment that I was the only commissioner here because they didn't want to face the community that was polluted. I had not read an earlier email where Commissioner Samasco stated that he wasn't coming as he felt the county board had already done their work approving the consent order on which I voted no. So I speculated, guessed, that that was maybe his reason, but I didn't know the others and the community was very disappointed. I was disappointed that the county was not better represented at that meeting. As the public in this board know, I'm determined to find the lowest-risk solution to the community from any future landfill operations going forward. A priority that I'm sure all these board members share. Regardless of all of that, I did not mean to disparage this board by giving my opinion in such a manner. And I will endeavor to be more mindful of my comments in that regard going forward. And that's my comments on that meeting.
I've got a statement to make. One, you brought up trust in government. In my opinion, you did not tell the truth at a public meeting in regards to the county commissioners. And I'm going to read what I typed out, and I can make it much more lengthy if we choose to. But you and I talked on this, so I'm just going to read it. In reference to Commissioner Bob Felix's comments at a public meeting on five twenty-two in regards to the proposed settlement with Eagle, in which he stated, "I will offer speculation on why other commissioners were not here because I invited them all personally to attend." They did, that they did not want to come out and face the public that they polluted. That's your word-for-word statement. In a phone call prior to five twenty-two between myself and Bob, after our full board voted six to one to accept and forward the acceptance to Eagle for their consideration of accepting, and after requiring public meeting, required public meeting on five twenty-two of twenty-five, I informed Bob that I believed it would be immoral and inappropriate for any commissioner to attend the public meeting, and that the intent of that meeting was for Eagle to get feedback from the public, as that is their legal requirement by Eagle. For any commissioner to attend, it would potentially jeopardize the litigation that this board had already approved. And I told you that word for word in a phone call. But then you go in a public format and state the complete opposite. You knew that I, why I was not going to be here. You said it because I didn't want to face the public, so I can go much deeper, I got quite a bit more here. I also have a letter from the Kimball Township Usikowski, Rob Usikowski. He does not support your position. And I want this put part of the public record. I believe every commissioner got a copy of Usikowski's position on this, and he did not support your position. And I can go on and on with other stuff I highlighted, but I want to make a comment on that.
Thank you, is there any, anything else there I know you?
Well, I just, Bob and I covered that. I was involved out there early on when Bob was a citizen, and I took offense with the suggestion that we wouldn't appear at a meeting because we want to avoid the public. This board worked very hard to address the public, to listen to the public, and respond to the public. I, I do agree with Bob, but we all have the same priority, number one priority is public health. Now, Bob and I go round and round about septic injection at landfills versus sludge going into farm fields, rivers, lakes, and streams. You know, so, you know, my opinion with Bob, where we talk about, hey, look, you know, we just got to stop septic, it's going to cause a problem, it's going to be more odors and all this. And, you know, he's passionate about that. And my thing is, look, I don't like the way we handle septic, wastewater treatment, commercial materials going in, Class A sludge going into farm fields unregulated, it's just an awful solution. So what's, I want to find a balance, and I don't know if we're ever going to do septic again or not. Or whether we're ever going to do Canadian trash, I doubt it. Or sell the landfill, any of the other options around there. But it's all on the table, and, and people can, you know, in my business, over forty years of law practice, passion can get to better people, you know, and it can be an impediment to good decisions and moving forward and making, you know, things happen. So, you know, I accept that, Bob, I appreciate it, we met and we talked, and, you know, that's fine. So, I just want to make sure, like with this peer review, my hope was the peer review is going to look at some of the things that some citizens want. Let's look at some, some cause and origin, some of that kind of stuff. But to me, I think we need to clear the decks on litigation and consent orders for enforcement actions. We need to get all that behind us because that's historical, those things that all happened before. And now how are we going to go forward? So our peer review, I think, is going to show us that, shed a light on a lot of that, we're all concerned about that. You know, the CTI contract, you know, the figures that are produced here, yeah, there's a lot of money went to CTI this year and last year. I did ask our administrator to check with Riverside Landfield, which is a landfill owned by a municipality down river. And they have Tetra Tech, and they spend historically about consistent with what CTI was getting prior to all the problems with the landfill. Million, million and a half. That was the landfill consulting engineering by Tetra Tech, a huge company we've had other stuff done by. So that helped me to put that in context, because I don't know if two hundred thousand is good or two million is good, because I don't run a landfill. But there's an example of another company in a Michigan landfill that's consistent. I know what I've seen in the development of the information relative to the odors that occurred that should never have occurred, and was a primarily a gas collection system failure that did involve a facility that had bio-reactor using septic, and it's all, it's all part of this analysis. But, you know, to go forward and just say, well, that's too much money. I, the testing and the materials and the data and the engineering that's been presented that I've seen over the last two years is, is actually quite impressive and quite amazing. And it costs money. Good lawyers cost money, good engineers cost money. I don't know, we're going to look at CTI's contract specifically with peer review because I don't know how to judge it. I don't want to just take a knee-jerk and say, well, it sounds to me like it's too much, so you're gone, okay? I want something to help me look at and say, a third party from outstate that's not involved with any of this to say, no, the engineering was lousy, the engineering was good, technology's lousy, technology's good. You know, I think they're going to help us with that, that's what I need to decide, because I don't have the ability to just make this conclusion that CTI sucks. I don't know that that's, you know, maybe they do. I, I get that, Dawn, I get that, yeah. Well, I just pulled up the scope of work on my iPad, and, and we'll talk about that, what their scope of work was, I'm going to send it. I'm, I'm going to share with you, I'm going to share with you the scope of work from the twenty thirteen contract, which I pulled up on my iPad. CTI was not hired to do preventive maintenance, they were not hired to manage the landfill.
Steve, you know that when we're in conversation.
Point of order, point of order.
I know, I know. We'll get it, we'll, we'll talk, Dawn, I mean, so, but that was my two cents worth on that, you know, is that I do, I do accept, you know, Bob's apology, I guess, and whatnot. And we just want to move forward and make a good decision, that's all.
I would, I would just like to add that we are a board of seven, and we all have a tremendous amount of committees and areas that we represent. And it would be nearly impossible for all of us to be at all the things all the time and be working and be good to our families. So, I think we are assigned to areas by our chair to represent in our areas. And certainly I attend other things when I can, but we do have assignments. And so I trust that Commissioner Angie is doing what she needs to do and attending those meetings and bringing that information back. Like judiciary, I don't really want to attend the fire chief's meeting, but nor do I think that there's a lack, like, because I don't want to face them. Right, like I face the business community and the seniors, and I would never say to those people, it's because you don't care. And so I think that there is this, we are a board of one, and we need to act as a board of one. And I think our actions as a board, especially to this topic, we have been relentless in trying to find a solution. And so it was hurtful to hear you say that and to make that accusation that we wouldn't face the constituents. But we had clearly stated our position before that, and we, we had decided as a board, maybe not unanimously, but we had made a decision as a board and we were moving forward. So it was disappointing that actions or things were said outside of that. So I appreciate the acknowledgement, and hopefully moving forward, we can just move forward from this in a positive way.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I don't have to take a motion or anything for that, but. I'm moving on to Item C. Well, first I want to say thank you for the public apology, Dawn. And I understand that sometimes passion, we have passion and it gets us out of, out of control, I think, but.
Thank you.
But, yeah. But moving forward as a board, I think we have some really good talent here. And I'm glad we can put these offenses behind us and move on, because offenses are too heavy to carry.
I would agree, thank you.
So thank you for the apology, apology accepted. Moving on to Item C, supplemental environmental plans.
The meeting on May twenty-second, just to clarify, was a non-official, Eagle agreed to come in and answer questions. The official hearing for the consent order was virtual on May twenty-ninth. I attended that as a private citizen, as I believe is my right. I took some exceptions, specific exceptions to the consent order, and I'll briefly read them because it's still hot in here. The consent order, I felt, should be for a period of five years instead of four, as that spans the period of a typical RDDP permit, and also the election cycle for commissioners, which I felt was important in this factor. Comment two, I listed the violations of the specific RDDP contract or permit, and asked that they do consider revoking that RDDP or place limitations on the RDDP in light of the violations of the RDDP, although not specifically pointing at the septic addition. And number three, I found going through the consent order and a lot of the state requirements, they don't provide adequate provisions to address and monitor watershed contamination coming off the landfill. We know it's contained, but there is Smith Creek immediately to the west of the landfill, and the woven drain immediately to the east of the landfill. Both go into the Pine River and of course then St. Clair River. So those are the three public comments I made during the virtual consent order as a private citizen. And that's all I have on that.
After Bob put that on, I did look at the SEP issue, separate, separate environmental project. The state has policy on these SEPs for both the material management piece and air quality piece, and it's quite detailed. There's time limits on it, and then I called Gary to ask if there was any developments after these meetings. Can you tell us anything, Gary, is it going to move in that direction or not? Because what the SEP does, you take the fine component, the hundred fifty thousand, and then you, you can petition, it goes into a trust fund, and you can petition the DNR, or the E DNR, DEQ, or Eagle, whatever they call themselves now, for use of that in the community. Within Kimball Township or the St. Clair County, whatever, and there's just a, there's, there's twenty-five of them throughout the state. There's all kinds of different things that you can do with it. It's great, it keeps the money out of state coffers and it keeps it in the community for environmental purposes. I think there's a lot of agreement on that, so I think Bob, and that, that was never raised through all these meetings we had for months and months. Wasn't in the original consent agreement, but do you know anything about that, Gary, where that's going to go?
Yes, Eagle sent proposed language, we had a call with them before the public meeting, but they didn't want to do anything official until they got the public input, because it could change based upon what people say. So the fine money, what they're proposing is a hundred and eight thousand of it be held in advance for a year. And during that year, the county can propose a SEP or SEP, so a supplemental environmental project or plan. And Steve said there, I've read the regulations, it's really involved. And essentially, for most of that hundred and eight, the county would get credit toward SEP or SEPs that usually would be, because this was an air violation, it would be air-related. And then the balance of the fine, fifty-five thousand, seven hundred would be paid within thirty days. And then, because I know I'm repeating myself, a hundred and eight thousand is held in advance for a year.
My, my review of the policy, it appeared to me if you have thirty days after the consent order signed to submit your proposal for SEP, is that correct or no?
Yeah, they're extending that a year.
Oh, they are, okay, so I see they can do that, okay. So they'll do that for a year.
If I could, I've got my name next to this item, and then you can jump back in.
Oh, I thought you were.
No, that's all right, that's all right. I talked to Greg Morrow, who was kind of the lead on this issue, and also Janine Camarelli, who in Lansing does the SEP program. They've extended us, as Mr. Fletcher says, we have up to a year from when the consent is signed to file for a SEP.
And they're approved, they have to approve it.
Yes, and it's pretty wide, wide open. Since we have an air violation, we can do things like trees at park, a new park, we can do things like educational. And in fact, Rob Usikowski, the Kimball Township Supervisor, has taken the lead. He's put that on the Kimball Township website as a survey of the residents, which of these things would they like to see. But the state, as I was told, they would like to give that money back to the community, particularly in this case, when it's a community would be taxed for it. And we can recover all of that, not the enforcement costs of an eighteen, roughly eighteen thousand dollars, but all of the fine. And we have up to a year, but we must file, they're not going to come after us and say, what do you want to do? It's in our hands, but I think it's an excellent opportunity.
Considering as a board chair, I looked in our bylaws, you know, I can appoint a special committee to make a recommendation, Gary, so maybe we'll do something like that right away. We'll just talk about it, see, get that going and see what they can do. I don't know where the SEP, was it, was it just Kimball Township or the whole county or vice versa?
The SEP has to be near the affected area for the residents that were affected. So they don't say how far away, but pollution was reported up to four miles out, so somewhere in that area.
Thanks, Bob.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on to conceptual initiatives. No old business, moving on to new business, Item A, the contract approval request for Hess asphalt paving.
I'll make a motion for that for final action. Needs to be done.
Support?
Dennis is here, I don't know if you want to say anything, or no, anybody have any questions?
I already talked to him about it.
Good. So final action? Any discussion? I think we have to do a roll call for this, correct?
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Felix?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes. Items B, Parks and Recs, the commission appointment?
Make a motion to send that to full board?
Support?
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, a little bit. We had two applicants for one vacancy. We did have Mr. Gaffney present to wish that he has that, I think that should be taken under consideration. I do know Mr. Gaffney, and I think he'd be an excellent person to put in position, so please consider that, full board.
All right, thank you. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sure, is that all right, you guys?
You got to fill out a card, just have them fill out a card, Joy, for the record.
Yeah. Could you fill out a card that's on the back table for us when you're done? No, when you're done.
Good evening, I would like to thank the Board of Commissioners for considering my application for District Number Three on the Parks and Recreation Commission. As I stated in my application, I have been involved in various activities and boards, most specifically to Port Huron and Marysville. From Art on the River to the City of Port Huron Quality of Life Commission. I was an integral part of the formation of the Harrison Point Neighborhood in Port Huron. We keep the group. Harrison Point Neighborhood in Port Huron. We keep the group on an as needed basis. And last year, we regrouped to lobby the city to make the Harrison, uh, former Harrison Elementary School Park an official park. We were thrilled to persevere and are grateful to sons for the mutual benefit to their organization and the neighborhood. I step back from groups and committees to help with my aging parents and their needs. I read the park master plan, cover to cover, to get an understanding of the commission. And I found the document to be well-defined as to the nature of each park, the building blocks of the path, past, the plan forward. Um, that plan recognized, recognizes the needs of humans and nature. It is a plan I can fully endorse. Do you have any questions for me?
No, thank you very much. I lost the spot. What was I? Do we have a motion to send to the full board? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the Environmental Health Appeals Board Appointments.
Motion sent, full board. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, which is a drone odor survey contract for the landfill by Sniffer Robotics.
Make a motion, send that to full board.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Uh, I just want to make sure I see Matt as out there. This is, if I understand correctly, the drone odor survey, that is part of the consent going forward. Okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, which is the Material Management Planning Grant Agreement for the fiscal year of 2025.
Motion sent, full board.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, this is for the landfill, the perimeter air monitoring contract with Trinity Consultants Incorporated. This is for final action. And I think it's just because of the time constraint to uh, order the equipment and have it in if you get in compliance with our consent order.
Make a motion in support.
Second.
Any discussion? I think we have another roll call. Thank you.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Felix?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Banda Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Trelawney?
Yes.
Motion carries. So item G is the Resolution 25-15 for the airport, airport sponsor grant, environmental assessment for phase three.
Make motion, send it to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So item H, which is the landfill operator agreement. I know that there really wasn't.
Maybe Corporation Counselor can do something on that voice there.
Um, yep. So, um, Matt has an update on that, on how the bids came in and an alternate proposal that we have.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for indulging me with the final action on that last item. It's critical that it's done now to make our implementation time, timeline that's in our consent order. So I appreciate that very much. So we did on, uh, as most of the board is aware, Talaski Excavating, um, has essentially decided that they're, they want to get out of the landfill business, for lack of a better way to put that. Um, they've been operating our landfill for over 30 years. And I think it's just time. Um, Jeff and Doug, the co-owners, are in their mid-50s. They've worked hard for a long time. Um, so I think it's just time in their lives to make that change. So, we went out for bids for landfill operation, uh, a couple months, well, a couple months ago, we posted that bid. And we did receive bids a couple weeks ago, um, for essentially the same scope of work that the Talaskis have been performing, operating the landfill on our behalf. Um, in 2024, the amount, um, that we paid to the Talaskis for landfill operations was on the order of 1.4 to 1.5 million dollars, somewhere in that range. I don't, I just have an approximate number. The bids that we received, we had four bidders, four earthwork contracting companies. Um, our lowest bid came in all in at 2.9 million dollars per year for a three to five-year contract. So that's double plus a little bit over what we had paid in 2024. And that was the low of the four. The other bids were higher. Um, there are some reasons for that, that are just kind of baked in. Um, Jeff and Doug Talaski do not run a union job. Um, primarily, the, the biggest piece of those costs is union wages for operators. And when you figure in overtime and the fringe and all of that, we're talking, uh, the low bid told me it was 1.2 mil is what they were estimating just in labor alone for operators. So sticker shock is, long story short, is what we, is what we have here. Um, obviously, the ramifications of doubling our operations costs would be a lot to overcome. We're talking rate increases, no doubt. We're talking other things. And we're not ready to do that. So, um, one of the things that we have been discussing behind the scenes, not really behind the scenes, but between, um, all of us, is internalizing and bringing in-house that landfill operation. I'm confident we can do it for perhaps not what we were paying our Jeff and Doug Talaski, but certainly I am confident we can do it for less than what that low bid was. Now, how much can we do it for? I don't know. We have to look at that. We have to dive in what we need. There's a lot of components to that. Um, if we're going to internalize that operation, we have to figure out staffing, manpower, operators, how many do we need? What all equipment do we need? We know we need the large landfill compactors, which is probably the least of the concerns because the Talaski Excavating doesn't have any use for those outside of the landfill. It's landfill specific. There's no use for those elsewhere. But we have to go through, what do we need for equipment? How do we obtain said equipment? Are we going to lease? Are we going to buy? Are we going to, how does all that work? Used, new, and all of that. So there's a lot to go through there. Um, so tonight, um, in talking with Carrie and, and Gary and Joy and, and Steve as well, um, I guess what I'd like to propose from the board and get some guidance is maybe the go-ahead to explore this path in short order. Um, do a cost workup for you folks as quickly as I can on what I think it would take to get up and running. Hopefully be able to give some projection, what I think it would cost us on a year-to-year basis, once we're up and running, and see what it would take to internalize. I'm confident we can do it. I mean, there's a learning curve for me. I, I don't know, I don't deal with purchasing and maintaining heavy equipment. But there is a lot of entities in the county, a lot of companies who do that for a living. And some of those folks have offered to work with us and help us find our way and figure that out. So I'm confident we can do it. Um, the alternative is just do it on contract again and pay a lot more money than we have been paying. So I think this is a better path. And I guess I'm here before the board to, uh, get your guidance, if that's the way we should proceed. And I'm sure there's probably some thoughts on the board about, about that path, so.
So we're going to make county government bigger again. Way to go. Way to go.
Well, is it making it bigger or are you just replacing positions with other people?
They're going to be employees. You've got historical ramifications. Anytime you have an employee, you're going to have to pay into the union, um, pension and, which we don't give pensions to our current union employees.
There would be, there'd be no union pensions.
You have to pay for it.
No, we don't. No, we don't. No, we don't. No, we don't. And yeah, if we go with a high bid, you bet we have to pay.
But are these going to be union employees?
No, they're going to be county employees.
457.
Can I, can I offer some thoughts on this?
Please.
So Talaski, they weren't doing this because they just love this. They had profit and overhead built into their prices. They had people they hired that could operate equipment. Um, I had a business that I was an owner of, and we vertically integrated a moldy business because we thought we were getting hit hard by outside contractors to do it. Companies do it all the time. You know it, um, Joy, because you guys have to do it every day. And Talaski is willing to stay on for an extra 90 days to basically help us build what we need to do to do it ourselves. And I don't have any figures yet. I know the road commission, they have their own equipment operators. Uh, the scale's right in the contract. You can look at it. It's not outrageous. They don't have union pensions. They have the county pension and healthcare. And, and Talaski obviously provided their employees with wages, benefits. Um, and they will stay an extra 90 days. So we have the rest of June, July, August, and September, where they will help us. And I believe there are other people that we know that will help us get this up and running internally. And, uh, I believe, and I know nothing right now until we actually get approval to go ahead and look at this. But I think the numbers you will spend to do it internally, like the drain commissioner does, the road commission does, is going to be a whole lot closer to Talaski's numbers than 3 million dollars. And, uh, the last thing this landfill can stand right now is to, to spend 1.4 with Talaski and 2.8 or 3 million with somebody else. It's just, I, I think it's doable. Um, contractors, businesses do it all the time. And, uh, you just have to put our minds to it and do it. That's my opinion. Yeah, this, first I heard of it was a suggestion by Joy. And I called Gary and asked her about it. And I thought that was just a great suggestion, that why don't we see if someone would come in and run that? Because the numbers, we, we got the numbers were so high. Um, so, I mean, I'd like to see us, give our, do we just need to give our administrator direction, like pull the board? I'd like to see us do it and maybe even give her authority to consult or have somebody help her set that up? Or how do we, how do we set that? Like, like buying equipment, like, you know, they've got the compactors. I don't know where you sell used compactors, but, you know, are we going to include all that? Maybe some staff? I mean, how do you, who's going to help put that together? Yeah. I, I think if you give Carrie that direction, she'll get it done. That's the direction I think we should, would propose. Can we get some thought on that? Maybe Joy or pull the board on that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind taking time and working with Carrie to see if we can put something together.
Oh, no, can you pull, how many people on the board?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, how many people on the board think we should go that direction? I mean, something to give her the direction, right?
Oh, that's true.
Let me get a comment.
Certainly do that.
Comment if I could, Commissioner Trelawney.
Yeah, yeah.
I might wind up apologizing again, but I'm going to take the chance. I, I've heard so many times here, I've heard so many times that we're not going to grow government. We're not going to grow government. Well, I like to have my trash picked up. I like to have fire. I like to have police. There are certain things where it's worth growing government. Commissioner Samasco and I talked last fall. I believe I put this idea out to Mr. Williams over there, that maybe it's time to take a bold step here and not only have the landfill filling operation done by staff, but also bring staff in to run the functions that CTI is running. And I know when Commissioner Samasco and I looked at that, I actually ran some real numbers off of the job market and the staff that it would take. That was at the 700,000 a year we were paying CTI. Uh, if you internalize that, you can buy yourself a lot of individuals, including benefits, whatever else. Yeah, you're growing government, but who doesn't want a landfill? I know my neighbors don't want it there, but the county needs a landfill. So I would urge this board to maybe consider a bold step, not only looking at internalizing the function that Talaskis did, but over a period of time, internalizing that function of the engineering design and design. There are individuals readily available out there to do that. And the cost analysis that Mr. Samas, Commissioner Samasco and I did last fall showed it would save us money. And then you have that control in-house.
Maybe my thoughts on that, Bob, would be, you know, with this peer review, as I understand that you've done the RFP on the peer review, right?
Yeah, the RFP is currently posted.
And once that comes back on the end of the month, then we'll have a contract that could be included maybe in the peer review to say, let's look at that as an option. I mean, that would, maybe that would make sense. And, and what's the process for that, Carrie? When, to actually fine-tune, uh, the actual contract with the peer review consultant? How do we do that? Is that something you engage the board in or something you want to do here?
Well, so the RFP had the scope of work. So that's what the consultants will be bidding on. If we're looking to change or expand that scope of work, um, with the recommended vendor, that's something we could do. But, um, typically there's, um, a committee. So Matt is the department head, purchasing, um, myself, someone from administration. And then Joy is the head of the Public Works Committee, um, would be part of the selection committee for the consultant to bring a recommendation to this board.
Thank you.
Steve?
I'm just going to stay on your focus, what you're addressing. I think it's a fantastic idea. I do not support expansion of government, but the cost analysis, I think, is going to greatly benefit the residents of St. Clair County. If we go with the $3 million contract, we're already probably going to have to raise tipping fees. I don't know what the additional's are, but this would be a backdoor tax if we do not look at this and keep it internal. So I'd rather not tax people. We got to go to 3 million. We're going to be addressing tipping fees probably next month to cover the cost of the new contractor if we go to the $3 million up. So I support giving you whatever needs, go forward and get the information needed.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to be able to compare apples to apples. So I think having a, a cost analysis to see if it really is feasible and less money would be prudent. So I'd support it.
We're good.
You don't need a motion, do you? You just got directions? Is that all you need? Do you want a motion?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
So we will need to have the board act on a three-month extension of the Talaski contract that will come to you at the next meeting?
It, I, I think it can. We could, you know, it's, yes, it can come in.
So, um, if, if the board is in favor of, um, going forward with this, then you will need to act on that, um, Talaski extension of the 90 days.
Well, that's going to happen potentially on the 26th if we don't have our meeting on the 19th, which that takes away from his time to potentially get the motions in place to take this in-house. So I think he needs direction right now to go.
Oh, what, um, no, we'll work on the cost out, um, in the meantime.
Their contract expires on the 30th, right?
Correct. If everybody's in favor for that. Yes?
Carrie, does that include then modifying that RFP to look at bringing the engineering function in-house as we've discussed?
I would say don't change the RFP. Do that in the peer review contract. To me, that's what.
Yeah, no, um, the, the Talaski, that's the operating contract. That's not the engineering.
So we're all in favor to move forward? Good, good. Thank you, everybody, for that. Moving on to item A.
Um, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Matt.
Joy, if you don't mind, um, if I can just add a comment regarding Manning and the landfill staff. When Commissioner Felix and I spoke about this, my initial thing was, yes, I think we need to increase landfill staff. Certainly if we're going to run the operation, we need additional staff, operational staff to support that endeavor. But even prior to that, um, I've worked with, uh, Carrie about this, is that we need to, um, and should, internalize some of the boots on the ground in the field, monitoring, repair, maintenance. Um, there's been a lot of talk over the last couple of years about CTI managing the landfill, CTI operating the landfill. They don't do that. They support our function. It's, it's our responsibility to do maintenance, to do repairs, to do operation. Now, what we have done is leaned on them for support for some of the monitoring functions, simply because we don't have the personnel. That, I believe, that needs to come back in-house, especially in light of potential future developments with landfill gas to energy. And I know that's up for discussion and we'll.
And I know that's up for discussion, and we'll, we'll get there at some point. So all that to say is that there will be Manning table changes that will be brought to this board fairly soon regarding operations supervisor and additional operations technician at a minimum, and also a, a small change to our in-house staff administratively to help support all of our consent order administrative functions. So that plan will be coming to you shortly. That does not include what Commissioner Phelitz is including, is suggesting perhaps compliance and engineering support necessarily, but low-hanging fruit. I believe those things need to be brought in-house as well, so that Manning proposal will come through.
Thank you, Matt.
And just a mention too, and that's, what Matt said is, is essentially confirmed by the scope of work that I pointed out from the 2013 contract. I've got all the contracts from the CTI, and I've looked through them. And so that's been that way for a long time, Matt, and that's.
Yeah, the scope of work has been essentially the same the whole time. And, and just, just if I, if you'll indulge me, and I know it's warm and it's getting late, but just a quick word on the fees that we've paid CTI. Yes, we're spending more money than we need to, that needs to get ramped back in. A big portion of the increase in fees was due to the odor issue that we did get in. How do we fix that? What are we putting in place to prevent that again in the future? So a good portion of those fees went to that, as well as other, other items. We did not, CTI did not bill us two point one million dollars in 2024. They actually billed us one point seven, still a very large amount, but not quite the two point one. It was because some of those invoices from the previous year were submitted late for some reasons. They had a big account invoicing change in their company, et cetera, et cetera. But it was one point seven fees in twenty-four as opposed to two point one, just so that's clear. And then I'll shut up.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt. Moving on to item eight is the Smith Creek landfill activities report.
Make motion, receiving file.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any other environmental works matters this evening? Nope. Information only. Item eight is the monthly parks and recs financial documents.
Motion to receive and file.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, receiving file packets, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two more. Two more.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Saint Clair County Board of Commissioners, Community, and Economic Development Committee to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Engie?
Present.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Trowell?
Present.
Commissioner Semasko?
Present.
Commissioner Rushing?
Still here.
Commissioner Bandenbush?
Still hot.
Commissioner Phelitz?
I'm sorry, is that me?
That's you.
Here, I couldn't hear, they were laughing. Okay, any additions, deletions, changes to the agenda?
Make a motion to accept it as presented.
Thank you, support.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Citizens to be heard, I have one. Libby Prill, Council on Aging, bids an EDA.
So again, I'm kind of vegetable soup in, under any category here. I think the first thing that I want to ask about is looking at some literature put out by the Economic Development Alliance of Saint Clair County. We kind of call it Dan Casey's EDA. I noticed under there that Community Mental Health Services is listed as a member. So, I mean, I was a little confused. I'm not, not that I can't see where economic development and community mental health can't possibly overlap, but this county defunded that EDA. So I, I, I just, I really have a problem. I hope that you look into it, I don't think it's right. This board said that we were defunding the EDA, and we are going with some other kind of a concept. But yet we still have county money going to the EDA. And then I look at what was going on in the past when we were like, you know, handing over three hundred and four hundred thousand dollars a year. Was community mental health still giving them a separate check? So I have a real problem with that. So if you would look into that, it would be much appreciated. You know, I've almost forgotten why I came. The other thing, actually, what I really came here for was for something very positive. I'm here as a spokesperson for a small community group organized under a council on aging. I'm a representative of, representative of the yarn circle. And it's, you know, a group of mostly old ladies like me that get together, you know, twice a week. And, you know, it's really about community stewardship. So we formed, our first meeting was actually in two, January two thousand and sixteen, but we technically organized in December of two thousand and fifteen. So this past month, after nine years, it was a tremendous honor that the Council on Aging recognized our group by awarding us the Ambassador's Award from Council on Aging, Saint Clair County. And very nice things said by Scott Crawford and Mary Taylor, which we sincerely appreciate the recognition. It was very, very warm and high regard that they spoke of our group. So I just wanted to say that community stewardship really starts at home, every one of us. You don't have to sit down a board of commissioners to make a difference in your community. And since January of two thousand and sixteen, our group of little old ladies have made by hand over thirty-six hundred items that we have donated. And these aren't like small items. I mean, we're, we're doing blankets and yada, yada, yada. So, but anyways, I just wanted to thank you, I encourage you to continue supporting these, you know, the Council on Aging, because we are doing things that are making a really nice difference across the county. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Libby. Do any commissioners have any updates? I, I have an update. Over the last couple of months, since this board voted unanimously to remove funding from the Economic Development Alliance, I've been working with different individuals throughout the region, elected officials, talking to SEMCOG. Met some very interesting people. One of them got as far as talking to Chairman Semasko with some ideas. They, individuals have put forth, and it seems to be popular with this board, that we do an RFP for a consultant. And that is being defined right now to bring to this board for the next committee meeting a month from now, the specific terms of what may be in there, and then get additions from the board. And the proposal would be look at in-house versus not having it in-house, and some targeted needs and identities. And there's some people that I've been working with that have made economic and community development their life and has helped put this together. So I'll have that for the next committee meeting. No conceptual initiatives, I have no old business. Any commissioners have any on either one of those? I'm moving along because it's still warm.
I'd like to comment, Bob, on.
Go ahead. Bob has talked to me about economic development. He's the chair of the Community Economic Development Committee. And, you know, I don't have a real good handle on where to go. We tried to work things out with the EDA, and they're, they're going to do their thing, separate from county funding. That's, that's a good thing, that's where we, we landed with that unanimously. And then whether, if one commissioner tells me, well, we should do no EDA at all, other commissioners maybe rejoin the EDA, whatever. Just, you know, how do we, how do we engage in that discussion? We have Lindsey Wallace, who just left as our planning director. To me, that was kind of a, not fortuitous opportunity, but if we're going to, one model, I, I think I gave it to everybody is, I reached out to Dave Struck after his presentation, and said, what are they doing around the, around the state? What kind of models do you have? And he, if I didn't, I'll get it to everybody again maybe tomorrow. But basically, there's different models they use. Some are in-house, some are consultants, whatever. How do we move forward on it? I mean, we have a line item, this budgeted for economic development. I, for one, have always supported economic development, just not the way the EDA did their economic development. So that's the discussion that Bob and I had, is how do you, I don't know where to go. Then it's not, it's really outside my wheelhouse because I'm not an investor, you know. So, you know, is there, do we need a consultant? Bob says, well, I don't know, maybe that would help. I think that's where you're coming from, is a proposal to kind of move it forward and, and give us some direction. So I guess that's, that's my two cents for everything.
Thank you. And I think, I think it's important. I know some commissioners have said, well, maybe we don't need anything. Maybe some are hoping we do nothing and we can slide the old EDA back in. But I think we owe it to, there was many people that came in here that had gotten support from economic development and are looking for that type of activity. And I think the community is too. So I believe we owe it to the community to continue putting something forth. And quite frankly, I think getting a consultant that's experienced and qualified in this may help us get there. Any other discussion on updates? Okay, we're through. I'm just going to move along here if you don't mind. No conceptual initiatives, no old business shout if there's any, anybody has anything, any new business. Other community and economic development matters. Information only, receive and file packets.
Make a motion, receiving file.
Support.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. May I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Your turn.
It is your turn. We ain't done yet, Gary.
So close.
Don't forget me, Gary.
No, I'm sorry.
Calling to order the Ways and Means Committee, may I have a roll call? Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Trowell?
Present.
Commissioner Semasko?
Here.
Commissioner Phelitz?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Still here.
Commissioner Bandenbush?
Still hot.
Commissioner Engie?
Here. Number two, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda, anybody?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three, citizens to be heard. I have one citizen who wishes to be heard this evening, Mr. Kevin Watkins.
Yeah, thank you, Coach Commissioners, happy June. Kevin Watkins, president of Port Yarn Branch, NAACP, and some other great things. I am speaking a couple of things here, MPC and Juneteenth. First, the MPC, known as Mackinac Policy Conference, just, just a networky Mecca. Jeff Bohm carried this commission of board for years. And it blew me screen, and it's, it's this time, I, I don't think I saw any of you guys there. I was there representing with the Saint Clair County Chamber and blew me screen with the delegation representing NAACP, because policy is important. That's when things, whoever hits the road, through policy. And the policy is very important in NAACP. So I was just encouraging that commissioners take it serious and be part, at least one representative or not more. It's also a lot of fun. There's people from all walks of life there. It is a true DEI on that island. I can speak for sure for diversity, people from all over, and inclusion. Every person I talked to there felt like they belonged, they were included. And, you know, as far as having the fun, and mostly dealing with policy and networking with those from all over, politicians, people from different municipalities, just across the board, businesses. It's, it's a great time. So like I said, I know you know the Jeffs, Kerry, this, this group of commissioners there on the island. So he's, his, his impact would be there forever, I think. But it's time for you guys to step up and, and participate to put, make sure that Saint Clair County stays on the map. Quickly, my last time here, I want to mention Juneteenth, and, you know, that's a national holiday, here in June, June nineteenth. If you don't know the history, please, you can easily, gang that, I don't want to go through that right now. Just want to mention a couple of things. One, that, that there's a beautiful display at SC Forest, the Fine Arts Building. And it's a pictorial display speaking of the, of the march towards Juneteenth, which is a true emancipation of, of Black Americans here in the United States being free. We have Fourth of July, but after Fourth of July, the end of the, end, end of the Revolutionary War, Black Americans were still eighty-seven years more in slavery. It wasn't till, it wasn't till June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, when General Grange came through, gave us in Texas, let the last of the enslaved know that they were free. And I was reminding people that Black Americans were never slaves. We come from lineage of kings and queens. We were enslaved. And that's a great time to know that, 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 the time that that's our jubilee. So we celebrate Fourth of July, we'd like you to celebrate with us, Juneteenth. We're all here in America, those make this a great country, but we're free. So please, the, the display at SC Forest started June nineteenth, go through the end of, end of June. And we have the great celebration at Knox, Knox Field, Knox Park on the south side of Port Yarn. Getting a great celebration on, on June nineteenth, on the holiday. And we hope you could probably drop in to have some fun with us and just, just celebrate. It's going to be a great cookout, get a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Moving on to updates, timely, timely agenda item following Mr. Watkins' comments. A, Mackinac Policy Conference attendance passed, present, and future by Mr. Chair Semasko.
Thank you. I put that on because this spring, when Mackinac Island opened, I listened to the radio, they said they're opening. I got thinking, I know that historically the board had a presence at the Mackinac Conference. So I called Carrie and said, what's going on with that? Or is somebody going? Jeff's no longer here, he always went, he took, took somebody with him usually, anyway. She said, no, because of the election cycle and the dues were required to be paid, the registration before the primary. No, she didn't sign anybody up, and it's, okay, fine, so we're, we're not signed up. So I did receive an invitation to go up there with some folks to, I guess, hang out at a place and couch surf, I guess. And for the party, Tuesday night, they have a reception for Saint Clair County. And quite frankly, I really don't know, I've never been up there, I've never really followed that, you know, what occurs there. But I, I thought, you know, I'd put it on for the agenda here to say, okay, now, what do we want to do going forward? I did get with finance, we sent two, we sent Jeff and Georgia up there. It was eight thousand six hundred dollars for both of them for these fees for the sessions, plus hotels and whatnot, and mileage. Okay, we were, last three years, Dave did the math on that, it was like twenty-five thousand dollars for three years. I reached out to Mike Mulane from our strategist from Lansing, from Midwest Strategies. Said, Mike, what, what's this all about? Is it something good, something we should attend or not attend? My general opinion was, at least on the sessions, and he told me they're going to go up to forty-seven hundred, from twenty-seven hundred to forty-seven hundred for the sessions. Okay, well, so I said, he said, yeah, there's not a lot to be gained in going to the sessions at the Grand Hotel that you can't accomplish with a telephone, you know, and, and people, staff, right? So, but he said, the, the Tuesday night thing, it is well-attended. I did see a picture, I think Jeff sent of some folks up there, a lot of people from the community, community foundation people, EDA people, other, all kinds of people, I guess, up there. So my, my take on it would be that we direct our administrator not to sign us up to register for the sessions. But, and I did send a text out to, to Jeff and some other people. I said, well, if it was open for attendance to any commissioner, and they wanted to get some mileage to go up to a, a reception for Saint Clair County for one, one afternoon, you know, I'd be agreeable to that, to provide mileage and maybe some, you know, motel eight on the, on the land, maybe, but I don't know if I would go. And then Jeff wrote back, and he's, I asked him, I said, well, is that invitation only? And turns out, it kind of is. So he's going to sort that out. If it's invitation only, I wouldn't fund anything that they get to pick and choose who goes. It's just, if a commissioner wants to go, and it's, it's a thing that the community's involved with on the island, for a conference with all the state officials, department heads, that's what Mike Mulane told me. There are a lot of people from industry, the state, department heads, you know, all this there. It's a good way to meet people. He said, there were a lot of people at that Tuesday night from other counties, other commissioners from other counties stop in. You know, it's, I don't know exactly what they do, but I would not be opposed to saying, you get some mileage and, and maybe one night in a hotel if you want to go up for that one thing. I don't know how people feel about it, or just say, we don't do it at all, or. That's, that's why I put it on, is people, there's stuff floating around on Facebook, you know, Jeff Bohm's up there doing interviews with some organization, whether it's EDA or community foundation, I'm not sure what. I don't do Facebook, and people are concerned about it. Well, you know, that's all private stuff there, but what do we do as a county? Do we have a presence there or not? I don't want to, you know, because of my lack of knowledge on the subject, just not go if there's some important thing to go, or what. So I don't know if it's worth talking, but that's my update. And my suggestion is, we don't do the sessions, but if people want to go and it's open to any commissioner, it would seem like a worthy thing to do if you care to do it. That's my.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any further discussion on that item? Commissioner Rushing?
Yeah, one I wanted, in the last three years, the average cost roughly was eight thousand dollars for two people to attend. Prior to that, it was one person.
Prior to that, it was one person. With the increase in costs, it's going to be probably minimum five thousand if we do the same format as we did in the past. If we do want to send a representative there or two, then we're looking at ten thousand dollar bill. But is there any way to document that we got any return on that investment of eight thousand dollars a year?
I did ask Mike Mulane about that, and he said, the investment essentially is just knowing who to reach out to and having a connection with people you've met and discuss things generally. It lends to personal relations that can benefit. I don't think we're going to have, I know, I think Jeff told me one time that there was, an example of that was, K-PAC got three million dollars for a streetscape several years ago. Did that come from Mackinac? Well, that's all the people up there, and it was part of this whole process, I guess, but I don't know if you can put a number on it. Carrie, is that something you care to take a stab at?
I don't know that there's a number we could put on that. Commissioner Felix?
Thank you very much. I love Mackinac Island. Been there many times, beautiful. It's also not one of the least expensive places to go. As a general principle, I am opposed of elected officials parting on the taxpayer's expense, and you see a lot of that. I will not participate in that. I spent a lot of time before I was even in office, working with the EDA, Dan Casey, and other individuals. And then since I was in office, elected officials and even state officials seemed to be readily available. Now, maybe I underestimate the power of having everybody in one place, but that would have to be proven to me before I would spend a dime of taxpayer's money partying.
Just to follow up on Bob, I did know that the community, this community reception, they call it, is sponsored, but it's sponsored by companies and businesses, so, but you would have the mileage involved, so it wasn't talked about paying.
That may be something different.
I just have a comment, though. I guess we shouldn't say we just go up and have this grand illusion that we're just going up to party, because some, some of us don't really drink. I mean, networking's pretty important. That's like going to high, high society universities.
You're nominated.
Yeah, I don't know about that. I don't know about that, but we, we give this illusion that we're just all, the passports, we're going up just to party. I mean, networking, in essence, for EDA, economic development, it can be important if that's your passion, and that was Jeff's passion, so I don't want to...
Thank you, Commissioner Trello. Commissioner Beeden, did you have something to add?
Yes. I think that it's important that we're in the room. I saw a lot of comments online, people upset about who was representing the county. And whether or not we send anyone or not, constituents from the county went, right? And they're representing their entity. But if we're not in the room, conversations are being had without us. Economic development is happening without us. So, we're being left behind. Now, I, I agree with the sessions. I don't think we need to be spending a ton of money on the sessions, but I think we need to be in the rooms where decisions are being made, where those connections are being made. And it's, it is important that, while yes, I can call up Gary Peters' office and Slotkin's office, just like you can, and have conversations, it's having all of us in that room to say, well, this is my expertise, and this is what you're good at, and hey, can we make this happen? Can we bring this to St. Clair County? And having all of that happen in one place. And if we're not in the room, that's still going to happen, we're just not a part of it. So, it's about the choice that we want to make as commissioners. Do we want to be where the decisions are being made, or do we want to be left out? And that's a choice.
Thank you, Commissioner Beeden. Anyone else?
Just comment on that. Part of the reason we're not part of EDA is because we do not support the nondisclosure and that, that position of it. If we go to those meetings and we're in those rooms, you're going to have individuals in there that's, we got this potential, but we can't talk about it. I want, I do not want to be any part of that, because we're elected and we're going to represent the people and the public, and I'm not going to be part of any part of that. That's going to be discussions that are going to be held in these rooms.
Thank you, Commissioner Rushing. Anything further? Moving on to number five, conceptual initiatives. Item A, Thumb Coast TV Agreement Continuation. Discussion?
Need a motion first. I'm sorry.
So, for the past two years, the county has contracted with Thumb Coast TV to have two video spots per month to produce content. So, this is if the board would like to continue with that. This was a commissioner-driven initiative by the past board, so the slots were historically filled by commissioners, not by departments. We have reached out to departments. We have had Thumb Coast TV come to department head meetings, present, letting them know that this option is available to them. There hasn't been a ton of interest in using them, so this is something that would be a commissioner-driven project. So, the question is, is the commissioners want to continue on with this?
Mr. Chair?
You know, last year, I looked at this, and I actually got the numbers from finance. There were thirteen different videos done. Essentially, half, it gives you the commissioner and the department and the project, half of them were Jeff, and they were essentially economic development, tourism-type things. Lisa had one, the Sheriff's Department had one, two, three, Health Department had three, Registered Deeds had one, some informational things. So, I'm not opposed to that, but in talking with Carrie back when we did this, I mean, I think you told me, Carrie, that we have the ability to do all this in-house if we need to. Is that correct?
Yes, we can produce videos in-house.
So, Thumb Coast Video, that's the same people that interviewed Jeff on the island, not at the county time, that was through some EDA or something, I guess, or community foundation, whatever. But they're involved with a lot of stuff to get it out in that venue. So, maybe it's the question, do we need to get plugged, stay plugged into that particular audience, see, or do we just do it in-house and put it on our website? I don't know what, I'm not locked in either way.
So, we do have departments that contract separately with Thumb Coast TV through some of their grants, such as Veteran Affairs, that produce regular content. So, those departments that have those needs are already doing it. So, this was more of just a general...
Okay, so we could target, if we wanted to reach the audience for Thumb Coast TV, there's already practices in place that people are, we're already doing it, and we can continue to do it. We don't need this to do that.
So, so the, this contract was initially put in place for commissioners to produce content and to do spots.
Yeah, the initial goal was to have, like, each commissioner to be able to tell two stories about what's happening in their district. Right, it was right around the time when all the ARPA money was coming out, and so we wanted to be able to talk about where the money was going. Only two commissioners took, took that offer. And I do understand that, so my background is marketing, right? That's my experience. So, I geek out about this stuff, and I love it. I understand that we can do it internally, and that's a great savings for our taxpayers. I talked with Don Fletcher today about this. Really, the, the difference between what we can do internally and what Thumb Coast offers is that they have a channel on Roku, which is a streaming network that people can access all the time. And they're also trying, and I hope I'm not going to get anyone in trouble for saying this, but they're also trying to get a, a channel on Comcast, so that if you don't have a streaming network, that you can also view the stories on Comcast, so it does spread the stories out to a wider audience than maybe those that don't have Facebook, that would be able to see it in a different way. I think the original intent was just to be able to tell the county's story wider. And if that's not the county's position right now, then we could save twelve thousand dollars.
What are you looking for, Carrie? You're looking for a thumbs up or a thumbs down on Thumb Coast?
Yes, if, if the board would like to continue it, and if the board is going to utilize the service.
Can I make a motion to end the contract? Can I just make a motion to end the contract? Make that motion? For final action?
Well, the contract's expired, right?
Right, or not to initiate a new.
Continuation.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Did we have, do we need more discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call vote? Commissioner Beeden?
Can you remind me of the motion?
To not renew the contract.
So, I would like...
For final action.
I would like to renew the contract.
So, you would vote no, and that is...
No.
Okay.
Thank you. It's hot.
No kidding.
Commissioner Trello?
This meeting done.
Yes. Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Felix?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
All right, moving on. Number six, old business. Any old business? Hearing none, moving to number seven, new business. Seven A is assessing services agreement, City of Elginak.
Make motion to send to full board.
Support.
Discussion.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. B, assessing services agreement, Marine City.
Make a motion to send to full board.
Support.
Discussion?
Aye.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number C, excuse me, letter C, Equalization Department, Manning Table Change Request.
Motion to send to full board.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. D, Solid Waste Landfill Care Fund escrow account, final action.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Discussion.
Why is that final action, Carrie? What's, what's going on with that?
Just time-sensitive.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call vote for final action? Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Felix?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Item F, Veterans Affairs Position Reclassification.
Need item A first.
Sorry. Resolution 2514, 2025 Summer Tax Levy.
Motion to send to full board.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, Veterans Affairs Position Reclassification, Veteran Service Officer Two. Make a motion to send that to full board.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, Other Ways and Means Matters. Does anyone have any other Ways and Means Matters? I just have one thing I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
I was just going to say, we still need to determine the meeting when June 19th. I don't know if that's Ways and Means, but being how we're hurrying up, I...
That's exactly what I was going to say. I was going to pose an inquiry to Gary. It appears that there's going to be a change of plans on the Journal front, and there might be a contract amendment that's going to need to be negotiated between yourself and the Journal people going forward. And I say all that because June 19th, as Mr. Watkins eloquently illustrated, for us is a holiday, so the building will be closed, as will the county. We won't be having a meeting on our regular full board meeting night. However, it's my understanding that meeting had already been moved to June 26th. Now, I sent out an email to the other commissioners indicating that on June 26th, I will be out of town at my daughter's music camp. And I wanted to be sure to be present for this gigantic million-dollar contract, discussion and decision.
Yeah, I, I emailed that I would be gone the better part of that week of the 19th. However, I think it's important you should be there as you have quite a bit of knowledge on it, but you certainly don't want to miss your daughter's activities, so...
Thank you, Commissioner Felix. I appreciate that.
So, I am flexible. Whatever date, if I'm not here, I'm not here.
So, we had discussed moving that June 26th meeting to a different date, so that Bob and I could both be present for that Journal discussion. However, it appears that contract amendment might not be presented at that meeting. And so, all that is said to inquire of you. Do you believe that contract amendment will be ready and be presented at the June 26th meeting, which would necessitate us moving that meeting to a different date? Or can we just leave it on June 26th and expect that contract amendment to appear here at a later date?
I'd leave the meeting where it's at, and let's see where it goes. If we get it, I'll send it to everybody, and you can, if you say, let's pump this over to the next meeting, because we need time to talk about it, then we'll just move it. I did note in an email back, we could do the meeting on the 18th or the 20th, too, if that makes it easier. We're supposed to... Yeah, I won't be here, but as I say, that's, you know, you'll be here on the 18th.
I will be.
I mean, I think the other thing we, we need to consider is, while we may be available, all of the department heads who are preparing items have all, since we voted on the calendar, are all preparing for the June 26th meeting. And I, I'd like to be respectful to, to them that now we're, we're shortening it a week. So, I just, I just want to be mindful of that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Take whatever date you, I don't care, whatever day you guys decide is going to be.
Your next committee meeting would just be a week after the 26th, so you could potentially take final action on July 3rd as well, on that amendment. So, it would just be a week later. If you wanted to hold it over, would be another option.
Thank you. That seems like a reasonable solution. What does everyone else think? Commissioner Rushing?
I'm open for any date. I'll make myself available. We have the 26th, but I do not have any faith in that contract, because their past history, I think, won't come to us for another year, the alternative. So, we could easily postpone that for final action for one week, and I don't think it affects anything.
Ding ding.
Okay. So, we'll, we'll say that we'll take up, we'll take up the matter on July, at the July 3rd meeting. Thank you.
So, what date is our June meeting, then?
26th.
26th. As scheduled.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Anyone else for other matters?
Question, will the chiller be fixed by the 26th?
I hope so.
I hope so.
If it's not, it might be ill. I can feel it coming on already.
Number nine, information only. Item A, Road Commission 2026 Appropriation Request.
Motion to receive and file.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, receive and file packets.
Motion to receive and file.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adjourn. So moved.
Support.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.